We'll call this meeting of the Yarmouth Water Utility to order. Record of attendance. Any declarations of conflict of interest among anybody here? None heard. Approval of the agenda. The agenda's been circulated. There are six items. Anything, anyone like to add or delete to the agenda? Hearing none. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Mayor Moot. Seconded by Deputy Mayor McLeod. All those in favor? Aye. Carried. Next item is the approval of the minutes. We have a number of minutes before you to be approved. And they have been circulated. Water utility minutes of January the 13th, 2015. Is there a mover to approve the minutes as circulated? Moved by Counselor Mackay-Zick. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Mooney. All those in favor? Carried. Water utility, May 14th, 2015. Mover to Counselor Dennis. Seconder, Mayor Moot. Discussion. Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Carried. Or contrary? None. Water utility minutes of June 25th, 2015. Is circulated. Do we have a mover? Moved. Seconded by Deputy Mayor McLeod. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Water utility of July the 9th, 2015, is circulated? Moved by? Moved by Mayor Moot. Seconded by? By who? Seconded by Mayor -- whatever. Counselor Mooney. All those in favor? Aye. Carried. Water utility of September 24th, 2015. Moved by Counselor Dennis. Seconded by Counselor Mooney. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Carried. Thank you very much. The business. I guess we'll start off with the water quality update. There has been some concerns by individuals, I guess, about the quality of the water with our, within our watershed and the, what is coming out of our water treatment plant. And we've asked Rob Chapman, who is our water treatment plant operator, to join us today. Rob, if you could come up to the mic, in case some of the council has questions to it. Thank you, Rob, for coming to see us today. I think all of you here are, all know Rob. He does a sterling job for us out at the water treatment plant. Rob, just, I think the basic question is, have you noticed or have you detected any changes to the quality of the water, quality coming into, out of the plant since September of 2015?
No, I haven't. I've had a good review of our data from previous years and this year, and there's no change whatsoever.
No change whatsoever? Good. And you do fairly rigor. How often do we do testing out there?
We normally test daily, a number of different quality parameters. And we also test monthly for heavy metals.
So it's pretty, pretty stable.
Yeah.
And does any of the members have any questions? Counselor Mooney? Oh, yeah.
Rob, what about, you said you do with the heavy metals, you test daily, then you test month, test monthly. Are those results open to the public? And is there anywhere that we can access those, or the public could access them?
I have all that data, if we need to have that in the public eye, sure, it'd be no problem.
Yeah. Okay. And the other one is, the other one is, a head of residence asked me about fluoridation. They said that there's fluoridation in the water, but I know that's been bandied about since the former water utility chairman was, I think, the solicitor for the town of Yarmouth in the 70s. There's no fluoridation in our water?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
I think too, Counselor Mooney, there was a, a thought of fluoridation way back in the day, I think it was in the 70s. And there actually was a plebiscite that was held in the town.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so. And at that time, the public voted against fluoridation in the water. So we've never, never done it, to my knowledge as well. Thank you, Rob. Any other questions for our water treatment plant operator? Any concerns that you have on the water quality? Hearing none. Thank you, Rob. Thank you for joining us today. Perfect. The second item is rain barrel recommendation. This has come from the Communities in Bloom Advisory Committee. There's a motion that they would like us to consider the possibility of making available to our customers water barrels, rain barrels. The idea that these would be rain barrels that would be used for eaves troughs to collect water. And in some municipalities, what they do is the rain barrels are ordered, the water utility in the areas will put it on the water bill, so it doesn't cost the utility any money. It's a payback by the, by the individuals who will buy them back. We've had a rain barrel project here in town that operated for almost a year, and there's been some interest in it. So the committee is recommending that the utility look at this program of making rain barrels available, you know, to the public, that they could simply order them, we would have them, they could pick them up, they would install them in their own area, and that rain barrels would be used, of course, for watering gardens or anything along that line. So that is, that is what the recommendation is. So I don't know what the members feel about it. Not used to pushing the button.
Or pushing that button. You're used to pushing some button.
Yeah, yeah, you're right on that one, yeah.
I know, can you just give a little overview? I know the city of Halifax has had the program in place, and you've talked to people in their water, water division, and just about the success rate, and how it's worked there, and how the program would be funded and the barrels would be paid for.
Well, the way that the other areas, and I know when attending a couple of water conferences, this has always come up. The way it's done, the way most areas do it is, they get the barrels in at cost. The barrels are then distributed to the customers at our cost, and then that's it. And then it's put on the water bill. And that amount is paid back on the water bill. Some areas do it in one shot, other areas are doing it in two or three installments on the bill. So it's paid off over, over the quarter or over the rate of the bill. It's got a double barrel benefit. Number one, it collects water that can be used, you know, in, around gardens, the households, et cetera, which means less water going through our sewage treatment plant. And secondly, it does give a source of good water that people can use in their gardens, et cetera. And therefore, they're not going to be taking the town water, or the utility water to, for things such as gardening, et cetera. The success rate, from what I understand, has been very, very good for those who use it. It's not a widespread use. You probably, are probably looking at maybe 100 to 200 of these things happening in a year. The average cost per unit, from what I've been told, and I don't know whether Dave you had a chance to ever look into it, but it's between $60 and $80 a barrel, is what the actual cost of the physical barrel is. And then the, the customer's responsible for it, and they pick it up.
Ken, are you looking for a motion, maybe?
Yes, I, I think the perfect motion, my suggestion would be, is to direct staff to look into the possibility of providing rain barrels to the customers of the water utility, and that the matter be referred to budget.
I was going to make that a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor McLeod. Oh. We have a, end of it.
I just want to point out from a practical point of view, having looked at this situation, that a rain barrel typically sits on the ground, and if your ground is flat, or lawn is flat, like most of our in town, you're pretty much going to use a bucket to get it out of it. It's not very convenient, and most people aren't really very interested in food, once they find that out. If you buy the rain barrel, if you find the veil with a bucket, it'll probably end up being used for something else, like trash. But, so that's the practical reality, is try this. Unless you want to put it on a stand, and get a spout, and down, and spend the money to do it, you're not, and then be able to put a hose on it, and run it up to your auto as prepared. I've got a couple of hot hoes, so I don't know what I'm talking about. I prefer using a tammer. Counselor's a bit, I prefer using. No, I do do something.
Yeah.
I have dehumidifier, a little bit, something. I always, guess what? I say, "Bald water," and I put it up, and I have to get up and put it on. At least I don't have to dip it up.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Deputy Mayor McLeod.
If you want to turn me on there? I'm on now. I understand that, Cliff, and I'm interested in the project, and I would be interested in finding go, what kind of rain barrel, if we go through, if there could be, not just one, a choice of one, because I intend to have maybe two or three surrounding parts of my home. And be able to use the water with the proper drainage, as Cliff has pointed out, and without having to dip a bucket into it, and all that sort of thing. So, so I'm, I'm excited about the program, but I would like to have a discussion with staff as to what barrels might become available, and the, and pricing. I mean, I've priced them at different locations, home hardware especially. So I'm interested in the program very much, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And just to answer Mr. Hood's comment, the rain barrel project that we had here, it shows people how to do them, and apparently, these rain barrels come with kits for the spigot, comes with the, how to do it. So it, it is a draining thing, or you can actually, by flow of gravity, connect a hose, I believe, to, at least the sessions I've attended. So you wouldn't be dipping them. There, it's a, it's a project that they had here locally, and apparently, there's a packed kit that you can get. Yes, it has to be.
It's not a fuss to get itself and make the whole that much weight up, and all the rest of that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's correct. Counselor Mackay-Zick.
Yeah, just a, a quick, a quick suggestion, that if we, if the staff brings back the report, and that staff also, is it possible that this could be put on our website, showing pictures and lots of information on that for the public, if they go online, just so they can see, and they can make up their own decisions, and a full explanation on how to go about it?
Yeah. Yeah, this is nothing I don't think we're going to see happening in this fiscal year. It's like a, a long-range plan for like 2017, I suspect, is what we'll be looking at, 2017, 18, if we do decide to go that course. So it would be a, it's going to take staff time to review it, and put the implications in place. We have a motion, and we had a seconder, I think, Dep. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Carried. Third item is the 212014 Lake George Road Update. As the utility is aware, that piece of property abuts on our watershed. However, we have been advised that the area that the work was done was not in the area marked by the watershed. So simply, we've asked Mr. Ernst, maybe just to give us a little bit of an update of what's going to be happening up there. There's been some things happening, so that we're all on the same page, and we know exactly what, what's going on. So Mr. Ernst, turn it over to you.
I prepared a little bit of a report that gave a history of the site, from when we bought it to where we are right now. And as well, we've been looking at dealing with a number of concerns that people have expressed with regard to that site, in particular, the aesthetics of plastics on that site. So we've been trying to identify a number of ways of removing that in order to improve the, the look of the site. And I think we've got, come up with a couple of alternatives, which we'll, we'll have to try in the spring to see if it's going to actually work properly, but I think we can, we can make it work. So we've, we've actually, can deal with that in the spring, when it dries up somewhat, to get equipment on the site. As far as the, the concern that, with regard to the plastics of leaching for, of chemicals out of the plastics, we've retained the services of a chemical engineer, Mr. Paul Arnold, who's an expert in composting, and we've asked him to come visit the site, take samples, and do an assessment, and identify any risks associated with, with the compost being on that site. He's a professor at Acadia, and he also has a private consulting firm. He's a PhD, so, in chemical engineering. So I think he's well respected, and knows his, his work, or his compost processes, and so on. And has any risks that may be associated with that. As well, we've engaged the services of a environmental firm to, to come on site, to take water samples from private wells in the area. On Globe Corporation. They're planning on being on, on, in the area next week to start doing the work. As well, Mr. Arnold's going to be coming down to this area next week to, to start doing his portion of the work. So that's basically where we are with, with, with dealing with the number of issues that people, residents have expressed to us. And hopefully, we can address any of those concerns.
Any of the utility members have any questions for Mr. Ernst on that report?
When we have the meeting out in Lake George, will the gentleman from Acadia University be, he'll be there in Lake George?
Yes.
Okay. And how long are we going to continue the monitoring of the wells in the Lake George area until, Dave, how long do you think we'll be doing the monitoring?
We'll.
The spring, for sure, until everything, I think it's going to have to be a continuing process, but.
Well, I'll, we'll ask the consultant for his recommendations, and I think probably we'll make that decision when he gives us an indication what he would think is appropriate.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. Yep. CAO?
Just to follow up on Mr. Ernst's report, and the counselor's question, there are two things that are going to, to drive, drive our activities. And one is the, is the advice of the, of the experts. And when they assess things, whether it's the water, water testing, or the, the work that Mr. Arnold will do, their reports will, will direct or inform our, our activities. But the other part is what the utility itself decides. So as an example, the water testing effort was directed, or was in response to the, to the conversation that the council had, and certainly, the, the concern that you had. And we felt that it was prudent that we, that we engage an outside independent firm to do that. They are going to be on site next week, and their results will be made available to you, but also available to the residents out there, because they have concerns, and they need to know exactly what the, what the results are. Now, council did say that we would reimburse for private testing that was done. There has, has been an effort in the community, Rob Gray, he's present, has, has led. Some of those test results are back, some are still pending, but he's agreed to share those results with us. And again, that will help to inform our, I guess, our recommendations, and, and the decisions that the utility will make about, about addressing any of the concerns and risks in Lake George.
Thank you very much. And we did forget one thing. There was a question asked about the test results from Lake George, and that is available on request. So if anybody wants to have access to that, just contact the CAO, and that, yeah, and we'll, we'll definitely make copies. Mr. Hood?
Could I have a chance to talk on the position?
To what, sir?
Could I have a chance to talk on the position?
Is, is any, sure, by all means, Mr. Hood. Come on up, and have his, right to the mic there. Yes, Mr. Hood. Yeah, they'd be perfect.
So I read the article in The Vanguard, and it was probably the first thing I knew about it, was somebody mentioned it to me a week ago last Saturday. And I went to Prince Edward Island on Saturday of this past week, and I've been sick with food poisoning for a few days, coming back from PEI. So I'm concerned about some things that have risen as a result of the publicity that's occurred on this incident. And I think a little bit of history's important. This, I'm not reading from any notes. We fought a battle on behalf of the water utility that went on for six, seven, eight years to implement a Lake George watershed management strategy, bylaw, and protection area. It's one of the toughest political fights that I was ever involved in, a political fight between the town and the municipality of Yarmouth. It was less of a fight at that time, with the residents of Lake George, with whom we collaborated throughout that seven-year process. During the course of that process, to give you an idea of the kind of issues that we've dealt with, in 1973, I was hired as town solicitor, and Kay Moses came on into my office. That must have been the reason why Boyd McGillrey quit, and they hired me, and said, "We have a problem." I said, "What's the problem?" The municipality of Yarmouth, represented by their counsel and solicitor, Irving Pink, have just, they're going to approve a subdivision in Lake George, on the lake. We have to stop it. It was the very first job I was ever given by the town of Yarmouth, as a solicitor. I think it's a 14 lot or 12 lot subdivision, still shows on the plan as a south subdivision. Before I could get the expropriation notices filed, they went out and dug the foundation, which got them under the limit for the first house. And it was built, completed. We did go ahead with the expropriation, and expropriate the balance of the land, and we expropriated the house, but cut a deal with the people that built the house, that we would buy it, if they ever sold it. Eventually, they did sell it, we bought it, we took it off its foundation, moved it to South End. Hardly a very neighborly thing for an adjacent municipality to be doing. That was the first battle, for me, on behalf of this town, to do something to ensure that the citizens, not only of the town, but many in the municipality, had safe drinking water. Wind the clock forward. I'm a counselor, and I'm flying on an airplane to Vancouver, and I read The Globe and Mail, and Waukurdun's gone. That's when we started with the Lake, Lake George watershed. That's when we started with the treatment plant, plant. I came back here, got ahold of Dave that weekend, we increased our testing, and I said, "David, what else can we do?" Well, we've been trying to get funding for a new water treatment plant. I went to council, and I got the funding for a study. And we did a study that involved three separate, different mock treatment plants out there to treat the water, to find the treatment method that would best suit the water in Lake George. And it took into consideration that the seagulls crap in the lake, there's a huge rookery of them out there, that there's a parasite that comes out of their crap, and swims in the lake. And we have a system that removes all that stuff from the water. And it's probably in every other lake that someone has a camp on it, they drink their water out, and they just drink the crap, and don't know any different. Now, when we started trying to develop the bylaws, the municipality actively worked against us. Actively. For seven years. We actually built our water treatment plant in three years, within that period of time. Working with the, the committee, though, we eventually got a bylaw in place, it's the bylaw you have today. Now here's what, come to the present property. This property was approved as an industrial site by the municipality, with both federal and provincial government funding. It promptly went broke. What were we, what was it doing out there? Well, I'll tell you, it was more than just sawing up logs. It had a big treatment facility to soak the logs in pesticide, to make them fit for lumber export. And it was slopped all over the place, and it was a significant environmental hazard. And you don't parse the words by saying, "It's not in the watershed area." That complete lot butts the watershed. So here's the point. Never had one complaint from a resident of Lake George when that facility business enterprise was put in there. So what did we do when it went broke? We knew we had a problem out there. We knew we had a real serious threat to our watershed. If it went into private hands, we wouldn't have control over it. So like the old subdivision deal, and many others over the years, we had to buy it. We went and beat up, I did. Beat up the trustee, made it look a lot, as bad as we could look, from the point of view of environmental hazards, drove the price down very low, bought the property, undertook to clean it up, and we cleaned it up. Now, it's unfortunate that Class B material's been taken out there that has some impure, it has some plastic in it. But I know this much, that if that is Class B, and certified as such, there are no pathogens in it that are going to cause any difficulty. And anybody that thinks that a little bit of plastic and stuff that's in it's going to leach out from Wayne Water and hurt somebody is frankly, just exaggerating. There, I'll be kind. I'm very confident, I want to say this, I'm very confident that nothing will happen to the quality of the water in Lake George. I'm almost 100% sure that nothing will happen to the water quality of the adjacent landowner. It's important that you do, it's important that you do make sure that that adjacent owner's concerns are addressed by testing, as you're going to do. I don't think you need to do it all over Lake George. Good Lord. When we put the plan in, we undertook to pump all of the septic's. Now, people may not know it, who live in town, there's no law in this province that says a property owner in a municipality has to pump their sewer, their, their septic tanks. There's a guideline. Three years. Nobody follows it. Very few do, frankly. I doubt any of them do. Now, when we went about doing that, we had an uptake, there were 86 or 7 properties in the Lake George watershed. When we did that, there was six, seven, or eight who chose not to have their sewage tanks pumped.
They ever get fixed? There's no requirement for us to fix them unless there's a complaint.
Right. And why not? Well, they didn't work, that's why. They didn't want people to find out, and they didn't want to. I think we, we had a program in that plan, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would assist in the rehabilitation of septic beds, if necessary.
We still pump those every three years, don't we?
Yep.
There are the only, only citizens in this municipality who are having their septic's pumped on a regular basis are the residents whose properties are located within the Lake George watershed. So my concern is this. It's incumbent on the town to stick up for the watershed, not flame unnecessarily the passions of the people who are maybe legitimately or illegitimately upset about it. My concern is, because in I don't know how many years, as chairman of the water utility, and as a counselor, I never had one counselor, ever, ever, crap all over the town, the way it's been cracked over, over this issue, unnecessarily. Not once. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Any, good. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Hearing that? Good. Oh, one question? Mayor Moot?
Number one, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. Because we don't have any tests, until we have tests, we need to stand up for ours. Secondly, it begs the question, we have to decide how far are we going to, we're not going to test like a kilometer route. So we'll have to figure that piece out.
I think, your worship, I think, Dave, you can help me on this, or the CAO, the amount of testing we're doing is not everywhere in Lake George, it's just in the immediate area, I believe, Dave.
That's correct.
How many properties are involved there, I wonder?
I don't know, six or eight, or?
Yeah, so it's, so it's not the whole area. It's just, as Mr. Hood alluded to, we're not doing all that, just that one particular area.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Any further discussion? Any further question? Mr. Horton?
I think that's a pretty interesting piece of history, that's for sure. But if Mr. Hood feels that strongly that people are running the time down, we're doing the same thing, then he ought to stay here and listen to what else has been said. I'm not, I'm not disputing that it's Class B compost that was sent out there, other than how much garbage is in the compost. You know, what went on? We're going to do the testing. I can tell you right now, I can take anybody here, right out there, right now, walk you up, and show you where the gases are bubbling under the ground. You know? So this part of history, or what's been done, this should have never been happened, there should be a full investigation on how the staff here approved this, how it got there. These are the main issues. Now we're going to look and see. Now, we're going to look and see if the engineers are coming down, and we're going to do all this testing and everything. And he said, "I can, almost 100%, how can you say 100% when you've got that much garbage? Who knows if it was all heated to 55 or whatever, whatever temperature it is?" And then, how much compost can you put on the ground that it'll grow? I'll ask this fellow when he comes down, because I think it goes back to neutral. You just can't pile, take compost and pile it all up here without treating it or mixing it or something, or kill all these trees and all the flowers out, out in this park, you know? So, that piece of history, I don't think, what's it got to do with what's going on with the town right now and how this stuff got there? Have you done a formal investigation that we're going to be able to see how this got proved, how this got moved? Because in the compost acts, it's one millimeter and two millimeter, no, no more than three millimeters, where you can go out and haul a sheet of plastic out as big as his desk, you know? And you can get out there and find plastic this thick. A knife is seven and, seven and a half inches, that's a hell of a lot, bigger than three millimeters. What do you say, Pam?
I, yeah, I...
You guys been out there, you walked it, you saw it.
I think, though, the part of the issue, from what I understand, and I can be corrected by the CAO or the engineer, but that compost, when it was in the Class B level, there was a lot of clumping going on due to moisture, and as a result of that clumping, a lot of materials was literally in the clumps. Am I not mistaken, is that?
I don't know.
And I, and again, I'm not up on that.
In all...
But this is all part of what we're looking into. All we know, Mr. Horton, is that the issue has happened. We've got a, Mr. Ernst has got a Dr. Arnold coming down from Acadia who will be on the site, and we're looking at that, we do, are doing the well testing, and we do know that we'll be doing remediation work there in the spring. That is the, the full intent. So, we're, we're just now with, with Dr. Arnold will be the one that'll guide us, and I think, as the CAO said, we're going to work with our consultants, and we're going to make sure that things are fixed exactly the way our consultants tell it they should be done. In the meantime, we'll do water testing of those eight to nine properties adjacent to make sure there's nothing wrong with that. Our water plant operator is making sure that everything's all due diligent at the plant and in the water area. So, you know, I think we've reacted in the last couple of weeks very, very well to this whole thing, and I think we're, we're seeing some progress there, and hopefully, everything will come out, will come out good.
The one fact we seem to be missing here, Councilor Langel, is, yes, you might have been acting in the right way in the last couple of weeks, but this stuff should have never got there, should have never made it there. It shouldn't, and it's running into the lake. And I can ask, that's your first name? Rob? That's a big lake, and that's a lot of water, it takes a lot of time for bacteria...
Could you maybe ask your questions through me to Rob? I think that'd be better, because they might can't pick you up, so, not to put him on the spot.
I think it'll take a long time, and it'll take, when the, when the lake heats up and you're, you're back into the summer months, for the bacteria to grow and spread and drift down from one end of the lake to the other. Would that be a correct assumption?
But I think, too, in fairness, our plant operator does testing all around the lake as part of his duties, so he does regular testing at all spots, and he's aware of the situation there, and in discussions with him, he plans to be testing in around that area on a more regular basis.
Ask him this question, then. Would the bacteria be higher in the summertime, or higher in the wintertime, or would it be the same?
Rob?
It'd be higher.
Yes, higher in the summer, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It's going to take a while to get around the lake.
Exactly, and we appreciate that.
So, you admit now that the water is making it to the lake.
Oh, yeah. Well, we, I can't admit that, I don't know. That's going to be Dr. Arnold will advise that.
The water is making it to the lake.
We, I don't, I can't comment on it, and I don't...
We'll leave it alone for now, and we'll, we'll see what the tests are.
Yeah, good, and that's the...
And that's the way to be, but don't come and, you know, come up with a piece of history like that and, and think that the towns and the citizens shouldn't be concerned, or the people of Lake George shouldn't be concerned, because this stuff still should have never been put there. And it came there and went there underneath this council and this management of this town, and we want to know how that happened.
And that's, that's being looked at, Mr. Horton, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horton. Any further discussion on that? CAO?
Yeah, I, I just thought I'd advise, advise the utility. I haven't updated you since my visit to the, to the area yesterday afternoon. Mr. Gray, who's standing in the audience, gave me a tour of the property, and, and we spent a couple hours up there talking and, and looking at, at the entire property, not only where the compost was spread, but also all the way down to the lake and where the, where the brooks and streams run and so on. And so, you know, thank him publicly for that, and, you know, I understand his concerns and, and Mr. Horton's concerns and all the residents' concerns, and, you know, we, we do need to address them. I discussed with Mr. Ernst this morning some of the things that we saw yesterday, and I think, you know, in, in, just from our brief discussion, you know, there are probably some measures that, that we can take that will, will help to ensure if there, if there hasn't been harmed, that that harm won't occur. If there has been harm, we'll, we'll stop the harm. The testing will tell us if there's been harm, and, but there are some measures, like we, just as an example, we, we talked about this morning, you know, around Mr. Russell's property. We, in fact, spread compost right up to the property line, which, you know, really wasn't necessary, but it was done. And, you know, it certainly impacts on his enjoyment, the whole thing impacts on his enjoyment of his property, but I think it, it probably puts a little salt in the wound that it's right up to his property line, when it really wasn't necessarily a need of that. And so, we can, we can do some things around addressing the proximity to, to his property line that, that will, to some measure, help to, to ease that a bit, but, and, and, you know, around the edges of the property where some of these streams, some of these water flows go, there are some, perhaps some measures that we can take to, to ensure that the fines of the compost, whether they contain any, any, anything harmful or not, fine material getting into water is not necessarily going to be a good thing, so there are, there are kind of measures that we can probably take to, to mitigate against that. But again, we'll, we'll consult with Mr. Arnold when he's here next week, talk about these kinds of things, and, and he may have some very practical ideas that we can, that we can get on the ground with sooner than the spring. So, again, wanted to thank Mr. Gray and just give you that update.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Jeff. Mr. Gray?
Yeah.
Oh, just, oh, one second there, Councilor McLeod, or Deputy Mayor McLeod, sorry.
I just wanted to say, Jeff, did you have a four, ride in a four-wheeler like I did on Sunday? What a ride. It was the same path I took with Rob, then you had quite a ride. I don't think you did. Anyway, I also spent some time with Rob and Melody on, on Sunday afternoon, and well worth good education, and I appreciated the time, and thanks again, Rob.
Thank you. Rob?
Just a couple. On that dipping tank that Mr. Hood was going on about, that was on the property of the See, in order to put a dipping tank like that, I'm sure they would have had to get the proper okay from, you know, inspectors or whatnot to put that in, I'm sure. It would have had to meet code, right?
He would think, yeah.
Okay, because that's pretty dangerous stuff, I'm sure they're not just going to let anybody put one in their backyard, right? So, and I noticed that the environment does have test wells around where that was. Now, they haven't been tested in years, huh? For the, for the stuff that come out of that dipping tank, but, I mean, that's another whole, that's another whole subject. I mean, since that's happened, I've, they've given me a building permit in the county to build my house there, you see where I'm at. But anyways, back to the, back to this compost stuff. I, I notice that clumping keeps coming up quite often, and, and the, the clumping of this stuff shouldn't be a, a reason to justify it as a Class B, because a Class B compost doesn't have the, the full-size bags and stuff, like knives, we picked up five or six knives yesterday, paring knives and peeling knives, just off the top of the ground, and that's just making one, one cross, crossstick kind of thing. We didn't, you know, really check it out, so it's... But a Cl- Class B compost, it, it is, is small traces of three-millimeter or less plastic. Am I correct?
No.
I'm not? It can have big stuff like that?
It's 25 mils.
25 mil? Okay, so that's that big, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, there's a bottle cap, it'd be 25 mil.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Pretty close. I could get you a five-gallon bucket full of bottle caps out there, let alone the knives, which are bigger than that, and the, the plastic itself. Now, I mean, we can skim this stuff off the top, but that's not going to cure it. You know, we could, you just can't bury garbage anywhere, correct? And, and if we just skim it off the top, there's places that, that's up to four feet thick, huh? So, anyways, just put a lot of thought into what we're going to do here for the cleanup. And, you know, we'd like to have some measure of satisfaction in Lake George as well, it's not just a, it's not just the town water, it, you know, it's, it's, it's our backyard too, right?
Yep, we're 100%. Yeah, and that's, we're hoping to have some answers for you for the meeting on the 25th of February.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the goal.
And like I asked...
23rd, sorry.
I asked Jeff, just kind of keep us as being in the neighborhood, just keep us up to speed on what's being taking place, you know, on a regular basis or whatever. If I need to give you my email or whatever, I'm quite sure Melody can do that, I'm not a computer guy, but just so we can be, just so, there's a lot of questions out there, and we'd like to be able to say something, right?
And I think, too, if you get any questions, too, Ron, you may want to just, you know, let any of us know.
Yeah.
You know, let any of us know with those questions, and we can pass it on to Mr. Arnold, or we can get those answers for you as well. So, if any of the residents or neighbors have concerns or questions, just send us all an email, our emails are all on our website, or give me a call, or give any of the, any of the members here...
Actually, I tried calling you the other day, but I never got a recall.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't catch it, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It's been a kind of a crazy week for me on other activities.
Yeah.
But I think, don't forget, we got Mayor Moot.
No.
Sorry, Mayor Moot, Deputy...
Plus, the other thing is, is when we have the community meeting, I want to see this go further than the community, community meeting itself, I want it to be an ongoing process. I know we've had a good rapport with the Lake George Watershed Group, and hopefully, when this is solved and resolved, we want to, not only a continuation of the work that you guys have been doing out there, I want this to go into the future, right? Because you guys, if anything happens out there, you know, we get a call, there's something going on at Lake George with the watershed committee, we have to look at this, or there's a problem with that, but you guys are there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and you guys are the true stewards of the watershed, so we have to solve this problem and, and get past it and look into the future.
Yeah, I mean, we've had...
Thank you for the work.
We've had excellent relationships with the residents in Lake George the last, you know, last six, seven years, it's been perfect. We've had regular meetings with the watershed advisory group, and we've had regular meetings at the Lake George Fire Hall, and it's been very positive, and it's unfortunate this happened, and hopefully, it isn't going to cause damage, but we're looking forward to renewing our relationship and showing that we're going to support the area. I mean, I grew up in the area, so no one feels any worse about this than I do, but anyway, but it's something we're going to fix, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just, just very quickly, that with, you said you have a lot of questions, and you're not alone.
Yeah.
You're not alone. So, is there any way that we can get those questions to, to the experts or to whoever they go to before we go to that February 23rd meeting? And I'll tell you why, because I, I said, I had said to the chair that, I hope we don't go to that meeting on the 23rd without the testing done and all those things, because it'll just be more questions. We need to come with answers.
The meeting's going to be at here, or...
Lake George Fire Hall.
Okay, you've already talked to the chief and stuff, have you?
Yes, I understand, arrangements have all been made, and that's where we usually have our meetings, when we meet out there.
Okay, this is the first I've heard about it.
Yeah, yeah, this is the, we, we're just going to announce the date today. In fact, we just settled this week, it'll be the 23rd of February, and it's going to be to discuss this and also the new changes to the lake that we're proposing with watershed regulations, to tighten up the lake a little bit.
So, I don't know how we do that, but if there's any way that we can get, we can get word out that if people have questions, to ask them, so that we come with the answers as opposed to having to walk away and...
Yeah.
Yeah, just email, I mean, you can, and, and you said it, Mr. Chair, you can email any of us?
Yeah, as long as...
Phone it in, right?
Phone it in, come into town hall, write it down, but is there a way we can do that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if they just contact, and I think, too, what's very important, Mr. Gray, too, is that we do have the expert in town next week, so if you guys have any questions that you, concerns, if we can get those before he comes, then he, those are things that he can address, and I, and I suspect, Dave, is it possible when Dr. Arnold's there that maybe Mr. Gray could be told when he's in the area, or some of the, that they could have a chance to meet with Mr. Arnold? Is that Dr. Arnold when he's down?
I don't know, I feel, I'll have to talk to him, I guess, but I don't know what his schedule's going to be like, so...
Okay, well, that's something, so we'll try to work, but if you get questions, by all means, let any of us know, and...
I, I guess, basically, there's only a couple of real questions on everybody's mind. Is this, is this stuff going to run off and, and wreck our ponds and our, and our wells or whatever? And what and when are we going to do something about it, I guess?
Exactly.
That's the main, you know, we can chase all these little questions that really don't mean a whole lot around in circles and blame and point and all this, but bottom, bottom lines, we'd like to get to the bottom of it and have a couple of simple answers and get her done.
Get her fixed, get her done, you're right, Ron.
Yeah, I've even talked to a guy, like, I own a gravel pit on my property, and in that property, there's enough loom to put back there if that stuff has to come out, okay?
Yeah.
And it's right there, it'd be a whole lot cheaper than hauling it from who knows where, huh? Just, I don't own the loom, I own the gravel pit, but another guy put the loom in there, so...
Yeah, great, well, thanks very much on that.
Stuff like that, right?
Yeah, that's good, that's good to know. Any further items on this? Perfect, okay. Moving on to the next item, very quickly, update on the rate review, Mr. Ernst or CAO, whoever is, wants to give us an update. We've been in the process of a rate review for the last several months, and just to give the members an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I believe it was back in the spring when the utility met with our consultants, they went through the work they had done to that time, and decision was made to, to defer the, the rate application until this winter, because there is a limit for how many years they will, they will grant you new rates, and so in order to take full advantage of, of the money we're investing on the rate review study, that was, decided to push it to the, to the, to this winter. So, last week, the consultants contacted us and asked to meet with our director of finance or engineer and myself to, to review their work, to make sure that all their assumptions and their information was, was up to date. We had a meeting, and they have, have reworked their report, it is now up to date, and I expect that they'll be asking for a meeting with, with you folks in the very near future. So, the next step in the process is they will present their study to the utility, and it will be up to the utility to, to make a motion then to apply for the rates as suggested by the consultants, and so expect that in the next couple of weeks. And we'll try and schedule that, maybe adjacent to a committee of the whole or a council meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bush, perfect. Any questions on the rate review? Hearing none. Next item, Lake Shore, Lake George Watershed Regulations Update. Just to let the utility know, we did have a, Mr. Ernst, Mr. Bush and I did meet with the municipality, we briefed them on the planned update, we've circulated them to you of how we're going to be making some changes or recommended changes in legislation along with Lake George, and that will be also discussion on the meeting on the 23rd of February at the Lake George Fire Hall, and that meeting is at seven o'clock. And that'll be, that'll be discussed as well to get members, get feedback from the residents as to what, what they feel. There will be no effect, and I can be corrected on this, of Mr. Ernst or CAO, there's no effect to the residents on the lake as such. This is an external kind of a process, there's a, I think the only restriction is on the motorized craft, there's a concern in, on that, but, Dave, did you want to talk on, mention how it would, how it would directly impact the residents on the lake?
It's not just motorized craft, it's recreational watercraft, but it won't affect residents that live on the lake, so it'll just affect outside area residents or users.
Yeah. The, the recommendation, just to, just to remind members of the utility, was the result of the Lake George Watershed Advisory Group, and they are made up of residents who live on the lake, have got properties on the lake, and the main concern is, is invasive species coming into the lake. We've noticed there's been a, an increase in the number of people bringing in motorized craft from other lakes, and there are some certain species of mussels, certain species that might get into the lake that could cause us some severe, some serious concern, especially around the water treatment area. So, that's the main reason for the change, but as we pointed out, will not affect the residents living on the lake. They're going to be grandfathered, and they'll be looked after through a system. Our water treatment operator is, we're empowering him as a special constable to, to enforce this if necessary for people who come into the lake with motorized craft that, or recreational craft that may be carrying something with them that may be bad for the lake. So, that's the big thing, and the other thing, I think, is the open pit fires. the big thing, and the other thing, I think, is the open pit fires, we've, we've made a recommendation, there is a concern, when Mr. Ernst and the utility did a watershed management review, it was noted that our forest cover is very, very brittle, and there's a concern of fire, so there is regulation, we're making a recommendation that we're gonna change for any open pit fires in the, in the watershed, would definitely be not. Most of these recommendations that we're making is quite common with all watersheds, so we're hoping that the residents will be, will be supportive of us, and to echo Counselor Mooney, I cannot say enough for the residents of Lake George, how supportive they've been to us in the past, and we, we can't, we don't owe them enough, and that's why we're hoping to get everything solved, so. Any questions on the watershed regulations update? The last item, we already said, there will be a community meeting between the utility members, and of course, you're all invited, it'll be at the Lake George Fire Hall on February 23rd at seven o'clock, and Dr. Arnold will be there, and staff will be there to handle any questions that any resident may have regarding the watershed area as well, we will also be discussing the regulations update. Any questions, any further items that any of the members of the utility have? Hearing none, could we have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Mackaysey, session is adjourned, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us, and committee of the whole, I guess, will be in a move, five, 10 minutes.
Good. See you.
I've gotta set up, I wanna set up that email, or the website, and then also-
Oh, do you want me to take this one, cause, just to get it ready?
You set up, if you need to.
Yeah, no, no. So, who's first, this gentleman? And then these guys will go afterwards, and then we'll just let it in. Whenever you tell us to go.
Yeah.
Already got me up here.
Got my PowerPoint.
Okay, if I could have it so that I could be on our website and just minimize it, and also same with this, do you know how to get into the website from this? I don't. Well, no, just to any website, I can, just they, I just need to get onto the net.
Just, yeah.
Website is where? All right, it is in the website, actually, I just wanna get on the net.
Make sure you get on.
Yeah, okay, and I can search for-
Hello, Earl, how are you? Good to see you.
I'm just trying, I know how to get on it. I know how to get on Facebook and all those things. I'm a little bit heavy, you should-
Oh, yeah, you can.
I can get on it, I'm just not sure.
Linda and I ate all of it while she was here.
Linda was here?
Yes, she was here, oh, she's, she broke it, she was gonna eat it, and, you know, that one right out of my hand, I don't know if it's crazy.
Are you gonna be okay there?
I'm, I'm okay there now, now I wanna get in and, and do the same with access this, and then just minimize that, so I would go to where?
So, I have two, because I keep following-
Yes, yes, yes.
Can you have two that are coming?
Could be, yes, well, more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned. Sign this, six, yeah, that's it. Okay, and then we'll just minimize that. Okay, now, which one, how do I get to those, how can I get back?
Can you get to your website?
Well, no, just where I minimize the two of them, where's, how do I maximize them again?
Oh, I would just click on this again. Yeah, I don't, let's see, it's probably this.
Yeah, that's it.
Just keep clicking on it.
Okay, and then the webs, our website, that would be-
Still over there.
Still over there, okay, okay, that's good.
Google Chrome, and then-
Okay, that's, that's great, I'm ready to go, I'm back to-
We know.
This actually isn't right at the beginning, but-
How are you?
Thanks for, yeah. I am kinda run ragged, we got a meeting on Monday with DNR, and Halifax, that's gonna be critical, and another one in another couple of weeks with, with Heritage, and then Annapolis Royal.
Do you vote somewhere in Screamer West Hall?
Well, if we can pull this off, it's worth it, if you can't, then I'll, okay, well, that'll work. Yeah, maybe I'll-
Now, I don't, the, I don't know if you can see them, that are coming from here, this band here.
Ooh, I've got the names here. Brian Dory.
Brian Dory here?
He's coming, that's the one I know, coming, so good.
Do you want, can you pass out the?
Sure, let me just get this ready here. Did bring one brochure, you know, I think- Okay, if you wanna hold it here? Yeah, yeah, that's right.
She was there when she was-
Yeah.
She was there when she was-
Yeah. She was coming, she was coming. She was coming.
And you were looking all like, wait, what, wait, wait? I'm looking for the picture. Yes, I know, I took it, I was saying, thank you. Thank you very much for the insight.
Thank you.
Empty hooas.
I think your camera's going to the right direction.
The empty seats have been gone too, so. Sure, I'll put these right here for now, I gave everybody on the council a poster.
Oh, good.
So they've all got a poster, and, yeah.
Do you want people to put those up there?
I suppose you could, yeah, sure, why not?
On there.
Football, soccer, football, football.
You need to come down.
So that's gonna be show over there?
That's where it's gonna show, yeah.
It's getting to all the, treated bad.
I think not, Earl, I think I'm good, as, as good as I'm gonna get.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
I think this is a new agenda.
No, it's okay, Linda, we're gonna call the meeting to order, Linda, you've got the record of attendance, any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, and approval of agenda, I am going to remove, I don't know if it's the same now, but I'm gonna remove 7F, the parking one, cause that was, that's just taken care of. Any other additions or deletions, and I believe there were a couple additions, so we have 6B, B, planning reports, 9A, correspondence for action, the bantam A, and 9B, request for decision, lost and stolen cards. Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship, I'm just wondering if we can move up the Dalhousie Management Without Borders team to come in right after the biosphere, and also I'd like to add Solicitor Greg Barrow to the agenda, and switch open the streets.
Okay, yes. Awesome, okay, so 9C is, is Greg Barrow, yeah, okay, you okay with that? 9D is streets open, and, under presentations, we have, we have the biosphere, but then we're gonna move up G, we're gonna move to the Dalhousie team, and CAO, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, a couple of things, Counselor Landrell had made a motion, I think at the last council meeting, to talk about the organizational review, or to get an update today.
Okay.
So we can cover that under my report, if that's okay.
Perfect.
It wasn't, it wasn't added here, so we can do that. The other is, I do have a presentation, a pre-budget presentation prepared, and I would suggest we leave that until the end, and see what time it is, that'll take a little while, and there's a lot on your agenda today.
Okay, so I'm gonna put it under 9E, budget, and then we'll get there, when we get there. Excuse me. Okay? Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Just one of ya?
Five.
Okay, good. Opposed? Okay, carried? So, we have presentations, and first we have the Southwest Nova Biosphere. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to introduce yourself, and I believe, what, we, 10 minutes, we usually allot, or so, okay?
10 minutes, you say?
Yeah, around there.
Okay, it's gonna be fast.
It's all, it's all good.
Hi, I'm Cliff Drysdale, and I'm the Chairman of the UNESCO Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve Association, and what I'd like to do is to tell you a little bit about the Biosphere Reserve, Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve, where we are right now, what our challenges are, and I can show you a little bit of technology that, how could I say, would help promote our region, and, and, and put us in a leadership position in, in the context of science and education management.
Yes.
Appreciate the invitation to come here, and thanks to Phil Mooney and Linda Saret for the help they provided, and also, I'd like to thank the folks from Acadia First Nations who came along too, who I'm gonna be briefing at the same time. A little bit of background about the Biosphere Reserve, Southwest Nova, I originally worked at Kegi National Park as the Science Manager for 30 years, and we came to realize at that time, particularly when the park was designated as a national historic site as well, was that, you know, we were, and also, we were a major acid rain monitoring site for Canada, and had some excellent educational institutions in the region that we could qualify as a, to be designated as UNESCO Biosphere Reserve, and initially, the idea was to just have the park and the Tobiatic as a core, and by, UNESCO requires it to be a buffer around the outside of these core, so we negotiated, we met with the municipalities, the counties at the time, and they said, well, buffer for what? You know, that implies it's good inside and bad outside, and they weren't too keen about that, and also, there was the whole implication of what are the legal consequences of being in a buffer? So they said, instead, why don't we create another designation, a zone of cooperation, and all the counties could be part of that zone of cooperation. It's probably one of the best things we've ever done, so now the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve, or Biosphere Region as we now call it, is a core protected area in the five western counties. UNESCO's mandate is United Nations Education, Science, and Cultural Organization, so it's the, a member of UNESCO Biosphere Region, our task is to advance science, advance sustainable resource management, advance and celebrate our cultures, and also increase the level of education in our region, and also stand as a global model for other countries and, and parts of our own country to learn from, and I'll just give you a quick look at this map, these are the Biosphere Reserves around the world, there's something like 600 of them, and I, and I will say that, you know, cultural presentation is an important part of our mandate, and that links with tourism, and, you know, over the last few years, we've wrestled with the issue of, you know, how can we keep people from getting off the ferries and driving west to, you know, the Halifax area, or the Eastern Valley, or, you know, the wonderful advertising that Newfoundland does for their program, or Cape Breton, you know, how can we keep them here? We've got as many nice, unique things, and, and interesting communities, and interesting natural resources, but you, people pass right through. Well, the one thing that we have, that they don't have, is we have UNESCO Southwest Nova Biosphere Region, so I'll, I'll jump to two projects that we've been working on, and it'll give you a sense of where we have to go. We have a challenge right now, the Biosphere Reserve was designated in the year 2001, in fact, the official celebration was going to be a very big deal, the Minister of Environment at the time, Sheila Cops, had made announcements, was gonna be in the Globe and Mail, was gonna be all in Nova Scotia, the official announcement happened on September 11th, 2001, so you can imagine, we got blown off the front page, and any page for that matter, by the incident at that time. So, we had a chairman at the time who was quite active, we did some species of risk work, then we had another chairman, and we were given person powers, project coordinator to, to, to help us out with our programs, we actually went through two, and then the budget was cut by the government.
historic site as well, was that, you know, we were, and also we were a major acid rain monitoring site for Canada, and had some excellent educational institutions in the region that we could qualify as, to be designated as UNESCO Biosphere Reserve. And initially, the idea was to just have the park and the Tobiatic as a core, and UNESCO requires that there be a buffer around the outside of these core. So we negotiated, we met with the municipalities, the counties at the time, and they said, "Well, buffer for what? You know, that implies it's good inside and bad outside," and they weren't too keen about that. And also, there was the whole implication of what are the legal consequences of being in a buffer? So they said, "Instead, why don't we create another designation, a zone of cooperation, and all the counties could be part of that zone of cooperation." Probably one of the best things we've ever done. So now the Southwest Nova Biosphere Reserve, or Biosphere Region as we now call it, is a core protected area in the five western counties. UNESCO's mandate is United Nations Education, Science, and Cultural Organization. So it's, a member of UNESCO Biosphere Region, our task is to advance science, advance sustainable resource management, advance and celebrate our cultures, and also increase the level of education in our region, and also stand as a global model for other countries and parts of our own country to learn from. And I'll just give you a quick look at this map. These are the Biosphere Reserves around the world. There's something like six hundred of them. And I will say that, you know, cultural presentation is an important part of our mandate, and that links with tourism. And, you know, over the last few years, we've wrestled with the issue of, you know, how can we keep people from getting off the ferries and driving west to, you know, the Halifax area, or the Eastern Valley, or, you know, the wonderful advertising that Newfoundland does for their program, or Cape Breton? You know, how can we keep them here? We've got as many nice, unique things, and interesting communities, and interesting natural resources, but people pass right through. Well, the one thing that we have that they don't have is we have UNESCO Southwest Nova Biosphere Region. So I'll jump to two projects that we've been working on, and it'll give you a sense of where we have to go. We have a challenge right now. The Biosphere Reserve was designated in the year 2001. In fact, the official celebration was going to be a very big deal. The Minister of Environment at the time, Sheila Coops, had made announcements, it was going to be in the Globe and Mail, it was going to be all over Nova Scotia. The official announcement happened on September eleventh, 2001. So you can imagine, we got blown off the front page, and any page for that matter, by the incident at that time. So we had a chairman at the time who was quite active, we did some species of risk work, then we had another chairman, and we were given person powers, project coordinator to help us out with our programs. We actually went through two, and then the budget was cut by the government. They cut all the budgets across the region, across the country for Biosphere Region. And since that time, we've struggled to build staff capacity to carry out our mandate. And we've got an active volunteer board that's just excellent, they work very hard. But there's no question, we need the horsepower of paid persons. Around 2011, a periodic review happened. Every Biosphere Region gets a periodic review after ten years. The review wasn't that great because of the circumstance at the time. And what, unbeknownst to me, in fact, as chairman now, we were put on a probation list in Paris. And that put us on a kind of an escalator, where every year, we have to report on what we're doing. And one of the issues that's brought up by the Canadian Commission for UNESCO is that we don't have any paid staff. And if we don't have a paid infrastructure and can't sustain our program, we'll lose our status as UNESCO Biosphere Region. And that could occur as soon as 2017. So we're, you know, working towards, you know, addressing this whole challenge, and it's, as I talked to the premier, Stephen McNeil, he said, "I can't give you a person." He said, "I'm laying off people in the government, so I just can't give you somebody." We don't have the trillion fund like Ontario does, where they give money to their Biosphere Reserves from the gambling casinos. We didn't get fourteen million dollars like Cluckwha Sound to sit on, so we've got to look at ways of getting where we want to go with building staff through social entrepreneurship. Yes.
Do you mind?
Yes.
I just need to clarify that. Are you telling me that you could lose designation because you don't have a paid person? Or because you don't have a person that is doing the work that they need to get done?
That's a very good question, and we might have a bone to pick with the review committee about that.
Because volunteer, I know, it's, volunteers are amazing, because they're in it for the right...
Yes.
Okay, I just was wondering if that was a...
But there's no question, the programs that we've undertaken now, we do need horsepower. And I think that the way to get there is for us all to partner together, and I'll tell you what we're doing with the provincial government and the federal government later. What I'll do now is sort of introduce you to a project that was started three years ago. The website version was released a year ago, and the smartphone version was released this spring, and I sent you a press release to your council back then announcing this, but I'll just give you an idea what it's about. Remember, I talked about this challenge of stopping people from driving through to, you know, to western Nova Scotia and parts beyond and not even staying in our area. We decided, okay, well, the Biosphere Region is in fact western Nova Scotia, and it's an excellent loop, it could be a two-day visit or whatever. We have excellent facilities. So we've partnered with Nova Scotia Community College Applied Geomatic Research Group, which is a world-class organization, which we may not always appreciate as much as we should. But we do have that organization in our Biosphere Region, and they are top-notch. They have direct connections with companies like Esri and Apple for developing software. So basically, we go to them and say, "This is what we'd like to do," and they'd say, "Okay, we'll figure out how to build the software to do it." So this is our turn-through-time, internally down-to-past same map app. And what it is really is a way, and it's accessible by smartphone, where you can open up the software, you can look at different themes, culture, outdoor, sea coast, or lighthouses. And all of these panels on that side provide direct access to some information on a particular feature. Let's go here, for instance. And I can go to details, and it will give me a write-up of that particular feature. And then you can hit website, and it will port in right to their website. And in the case of things like, so for instance, you could book right off that website. On the smartphone version, it actually also tells you how to get there. So very much like Google Maps, it will then tell you, "This is the route to get there," and it will print out the driving instructions to get there as well. So there's, as I say, these different themes for important heritage areas all around western Nova Scotia. Now let me just show you something else here that's quite significant. Let's go to towns, and let's go to Yarmouth. So then we can zoom up Yarmouth, and same thing happens. We can click on any of those bed and breakfasts, or information office, and it will port into their websites, and also you can get the direction business for using a smartphone. Another thing I should mention here, just in passing, if I can hit that anchor, tells you what the tide times are in real time. And we have these for throughout western Nova Scotia. So somebody coming to this area can look at, okay, when is the tide going to be higher, when is it going to be low? What the weather is, you can check on weather, you can check on road conditions, and as I say, all of the, you know, services that are in the area. And again, with a smartphone, it's going to tell you exactly where you are in that map, and then how to get there. Remember that for the next project I'm going to introduce to you. The challenge we have with this particular project is that we've got to tell people it's there. We've got to market it. Bay ferries has said, if we develop a contract with them, they'll market that software on their boat. You know, we've got to get into the tourist offices. We have QR codes, and I put a poster on each of your desks.
Yeah.
So it can be accessed via a QR code as well. So we've got to get that message out that that exists, that will help keep people in our area and present what we have to offer. Okay, I'm going to go quickly on to the next project, which is pending, and you're going to be a test guinea pig for this one. Just give you, there's our mission statement. For nature, we support conservation efforts and collaboration through education and research. For culture, we promote the integrity of cultural resources and heritage in the region. For industry, we promote the current traditional contemporary resource management that identifies opportunities for enhancement and innovation. And we encourage people to work together in communities. So we're saying, southwestern Nova Scotia should be a model for advancement of society, and it is, and it has been. Mind you, we've had our blows with the loss of the Bowwaters and the frustrations with the Yarmouth ferries certainly, but this is still a pretty amazing place in the world, and I've been around a bit, so I can tell you it is. Okay, so how do we address this particular aspect of science, in fact, advancing science? Well, we've developed a project proposal, and this is going to be brought to the province. I've also fill arranged meetings with our MPs. The goal is to develop an interactive science atlas. So the idea is that there's lots of people collecting data around this end of the province, whether it be the long-range transport of air pollutant study site at Kegy Park, Acid Rain, or Tripa, Tuxley River Group, or Carp, or MTRI, or Kegy Park themselves, or the universities carrying our research. But all this is disconnected. So the idea behind this project is to, in a software environment, something like with the map app, that we would develop an online GIS-based science atlas usable by desktop, computer, and smart tablet technology, which provides access to information and data on biophysical characteristics and climate for this southwestern Nova Scotia region. It should serve as a practical tool for governments, scientists, land use managers, and students. So this is not just for tourists, this is a tool that we're intending for people in the business as well as scientists. The objective is to develop software technology that provides real-time global positioning and user access to georeference landscape features, scientific study sites, resource management activities, zoning boundaries, and associated data sets. I'm just going to pass this around, because this is the start of a paper version of it. That's what we're putting in digital form, and it sounds also like a paper version as well. There's everything there from soils and geology, geomorphology, satellite imagery that could be updated year to year, so you could track what's going on in the region, plus access via websites to these research centers, where we'd ask them to contribute data to the main system. So second objective, incorporate, including via project partner websites, sources of expertise, text information, time map, and remote sensing data that describes marine and terrestrial biophysical attributes, including atmosphere, weather, tides, microclimate, precip chemistry, geology, geomorph, coastal marine processes, soils, drainage basins, limnology, vegetation, forests, and other biodiversity characteristics. So the whole realm of the ecosystem, we would try and capture in that piece of software. And again, remembering that all that data might not be in the software per se, but it could be pointed to and accessed through somebody else's website, for instance, Environment Canada or Perks Canada. Okay, three, and I'm running out of time, I know. Enlist government agencies, industry, educational institutions, communities, and NGOs to contribute to the development. So we're not going to develop this thing in isolation, the idea would be to pull together a committee and say, "Okay, let's build this thing, and what, you know, what needs to be done to make it usable by everybody." Facilit access to temporal and spatial data that can be used for relational analysis, including climate change impacts. One of the things I've found as a scientist is if you can get access to all the data in an ecosystem and start looking at it statistically, you all of a sudden start finding interrelationships you didn't expect existed. So for instance, when we did research on mercury in Kegy, we all of a sudden found that, well, it's the fish in dark-water lakes are the ones that have got the high mercury levels as compared to the clear-water lakes. Well, you wouldn't have realized that that was a relationship. Another one is, you know, Blandings turtles, many turtles, in fact, their sex ratio of their hatchlings is dependent on incubation temperature. So all of a sudden, you can say, "Okay, well, what are the microtemperatures or microclimate on a beach, and what's going on with the turtle population to see if in fact we're starting to change based on climate change?" And it goes on, you know, forest impacts, insects coming in, whatever. So the ability to access data to allow scientists and students to look for relational analysis of things that one don't expect is another objective. And five, incorporate socio-economic and government services, information, policy, identify management practices for sustainable resource management, rural community development, et cetera. And again, this is the opportunity, giving the opportunity for municipalities, or provincial government, or federal government to, in the atlas, provide their regulations, or in some cases, a simplified version of their regulations, so people can read and say, "What is the forest management policy in Nova Scotia?" Oh, you can read this on one page, you don't have to be chasing documents. So, and we're looking for partners to help us build this thing, including the municipalities. And we've talked to the federal government, as I say, Phil arranged a meeting with our partners, I'm meeting with the province next week, and we'll be going around the western part of the province to see if we can get this thing going. And in part, one of the things it will help us do, as far as our proposal, is we've identified the need for person to coordinate and educate, to actually travel to the schools, into municipal governments, explaining how this thing's worked, and advancing its use as an educational tool. So I think that's all I really have to say right now, unless there's any questions. Again, I think our region has a challenge here, you know, we've got to make a strong case to UNESCO that, you know, we are worthy of continuing with this status. And as I say, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm biased, but I think I reflect our board's view, UNESCO status for tourism and for advancing education is gold, if we can do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, worship. Cliff, good job. This is the second or third time I've had the opportunity to listen to Cliff, and every time I listen to him, I get more and more amazed by his amount of knowledge, and you see the people sitting around the table is... I only have one question every time I go there, what in the hell am I doing here? Because I don't have much to add, but Cliff did an excellent presentation to our two members of parliament here a couple weeks ago, Bernadette Jordan, who's the chair of the Atlantic Caucus for the Liberal Party, and Colin Fraser, I think who had a good grasp of what was going on. And they're going to try to find some alternative ways in a couple of federal departments to get some funding for the staff support that Cliff was looking. But Cliff, right now, we're in our grants to organizations, so if we can get that request in for funding right away, Linda, I know we still had a couple that came in late, but I think the CAO has recognized the importance of the UNESCO Biosphere, even though we're a town at the far end, it's an important group of individuals that are doing some very important work, not only for the betterment of this community, but for the betterment of longer-term goals of making the world a better place, cleaner place, and to show our unique attributes to the rest of the world. So Cliff, on behalf of myself, as I represent it from town, thank you very much for the work and what the whole board does. I have a greater appreciation of the knowledge that they have sitting around the table. But if we can do that component, and can you just kind of give us a kind of range of what you're looking for for municipal support in money? Because I know it's not a big amount.
Right. I think the story's going to be told, I have to be careful here, at our meeting on Monday with NSDNR, because obviously, you know, we need a significant chunk of money to get the ball rolling, and they're going to be an important player. So, and they're going to look at it and say, "Yes, this is worthwhile doing," or "No, it's not." So certainly by middle of next week, I'll have a pretty good idea whether we're going to fly or not. And, yes.
Plus, the other thing is with the meeting with the MPs, Mr. Fraser and Bernadette, and the last board meeting, there's, industry has a role to play in this too.
Absolutely. And we started off this proposal with the suggestion that we should negotiate, and we will negotiate, again with the province's blessing, with Westfor, the new consortium that has formulated out of a number of mills in western Nova Scotia, AF Terrio, and, you know, Lewis Lumber, and a few others, and see if we can get their support. It would be, I think, a useful tool for them, and also I think it would help them kind of put their business card out in the public's eye, that they are in fact contributing to society. And other, small woodlot owners. I mean, to have somebody that owns a small woodlot, be able to go over there with a smartphone, go out into his woodlot and get access to all the satellite and soils and, you know, soil chemistry data on his piece of land. That's, you know, so we think Small Woodlot Owners Association is going to be another important supporter. But this, you know, it's a huge task, and we're looking for a total of something like three hundred thousand dollars, so we've got some work ahead of us.
But that, yeah, and the municipal component is not going to be, you know, it's going to be a portion of that, but I think government, industry, all three levels of government have a part to play in this. But I think the guy that's going to carry the majority of the ball is going to have to be our federal counterparts. And there was some appetite, from what I saw around the table there a couple weeks ago, that they're willing to do their part.
Right, right. I make one last point, and I know I'm going over time, but one thing that the municipalities could do, and I sent a letter around to them to think about how they might be able to help the Biosphere Region status, and I do have concerns about the attitude of the Canadian Commission for UNESCO's review committee when they said you need a coordinator, one person. There's different ways to skin the cat. But if, for instance, you have a tourism coordinator or an events coordinator at the municipal level, you know, if they had some job responsibility in effect to promote the UNESCO, the status of Yarmouth Town as a UNESCO community, that would be great, you know, using signs. Dig Beach is just putting up a new highway sign associated with Biosphere Region. You know, we think that there should be UNESCO Biosphere Community signs everywhere, and, you know, different other events that could go towards those general objectives that we had, you know, but at the local level. You know, it's really all about community collaboration in a way. So that would be a great help, if you've got a person that's, you know, wants to have in addition to their other tasks, promote the concept of the UNESCO Biosphere Region in Yarmouth. You know, that's great.
Greg Barrow, he's on our agenda later. Deputy?
Thank you very much. It's, you've presented before, and I've enjoyed the presentations. Do you have an office, an area that you could work out of it, or do you... If you don't have an office, I have an office for you.
Okay.
I agree.
It's the Killen Brothers Building on Water Street.
Well...
But you help us find some funding, and we'll certainly, I'm sure, council will consider that seriously.
We are looking for, we're exploring the development of an office in Caledonia, a part of their business hub in New Far Hall, so that's one possibility, and that might be heritage-oriented. We're talking with the executive director of Community Culture and Heritage Department in the middle of the month about that. Hard to say where that's going to go. And as I say, we're talking with NSDNR. But again, you know, if a community wants to say, take the bull by the horns and say, "Well, let's, you know, set up, you know, an operation here that sort of focuses on promoting our area from that UNESCO perspective," that's great, you know. I mean, I think, you know, there's huge potential if we work together. In Europe, people plan their vacations from Biosphere Reserve to Biosphere Reserve. You know, they literally have a stronger status than national parks in Europe. And we think there's the potential there, and also there's, Europeans become a target audience for us because they know about Biosphere Reserve. So, you know, it's a matter of, I think, marshalling our forces and going for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get a question, maybe Jeff.
They're going to ask for some funding, I think, from outside of the money they're looking for direct, or some money to run the organization, just with, you know, you can see the materials that are printed and that they've passed out, but I wonder how we can get that into the grants organization process in a do, in a quick manner, probably.
CAO?
Okay, so we would need a we would need a request, you know, a written request for you to consider. And then, you know, how our process works is that you would all have it and you would all consider it. And if you all all agreed, or on average you agreed, then there would be there would be something provided. You know, the UNESCO designation is is fifteen years old, and it does not have a presence in our community. I am extremely jealous when I drive through Queen's County and see their sign. You know, I think we could do a lot more than a sign and and could represent this to our visitors. The science, the 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 whole story of of the biosphere could be presented in our community as as our visitors arrive. And I think it's a huge opportunity, and I think we should we should pursue that discussion because I think there are possibilities, it sounds like.
Can I make one point more, just a kind of a minor thing? But you'll notice on there's the municipal links in towns, and municipal links go to county websites. And similarly with the town site, make sure in the future, when you're doing your website, that you have not the dog catcher at the start and the collection of taxes, put tourism attractions, because people will actually be accessing your websites. So it's another way also of advertising your businesses within your jurisdictions, to have the businesses listed on your own municipal websites. Anyway, that's a minor point.
Thank you. Councilor Alangel?
How much money are you talking grants to organizations? Is it a large amount?
I think, Cliff, I think what were the municipal tax given last time? Was it a thousand dollars?
We normally get five hundred dollars from each of the counties, from the five counties. When we did the map app, we asked for, I think, fifteen hundred dollars for each. So.
Could we not just do that as a motion? And just do, I mean, five hundred instead of everybody sitting doing spreadsheets and all that? Or I'm just I'm just too expert. I mean, we got our spreadsheets done already out.
Grant to an organization.
Okay. Go do the grant, okay.
Thanks.
Counselor Mizek?
Thank you. The grants organization is, this spreadsheet has to be in by the February the first. Did I read that email correctly? So before this gentleman goes, is do we have an application that he could fill out? And if he could fill the application out and pass it back to us, so we could consider we could consider it because our our spreadsheets, which mine is already done, and you're not on there, but I have room to put you on there and for contribute some, so.
I could do that, or is it saying by next week, I could certainly submit something?
But next week would be too late.
Too late.
Yeah. So if you can get just, if we give you the application now, and you can fill it out, and we'll just, if you're looking for five hundred bucks, it doesn't take you long to fill it out, your organization, your name, and that's it. Anyway, that's, yeah. She's going to get one now. But anyway, it is it is for February the first. Right.
Okay, so Linda will email you, she'll email you, just fill out the application that she sends you. And really, what you provided us today, I would say is sufficient, okay? But but it's, it'll have to be tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Good, good job.
Go ahead.
Your worship, and again, I'm probably at a line and probably whatever, but I'm thinking, we're talking five hundred bucks. And that five hundred bucks, we're asking Mr. Drysdale to put in an application. We've heard a sterling presentation today of the amazing work they're doing. I know I'm going to be putting five hundred bucks on my line, and I suspect most of us around the table are, why couldn't we just agree today to give them five hundred bucks? And then we'd only be working with seventy four thousand five hundred in the grants to organizations instead of going all this. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we simply grant the Southwest Nova Scotia Biosphere Reserve Association five hundred dollars out of the grants to organizations, and that would lower our amount to seventy four thousand five hundred. I mean, that's one heck of a bargain for the work these people are doing.
It is a bargain, it's just not the process. So I'm not going to vote for it, but it might go through. And it's got, it has nothing to do with your organization, I want you to know, but we could have fifty people come in and ask us at the last minute and.
I could certainly put in an application tomorrow. It's not a problem, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
No, no, it'll it'll get in. Yeah. Okay? Good. So what we're going to do, thank you again very much. So we're going to move up G, so the Dalhousie Management Without Borders team, if you want to come forward. We certainly recognize.
Yes, it's lovely to see you guys again.
Yes.
Thank you, your worship and town councillors, for having us back here today. We really appreciate this opportunity.
We're thrilled that you're here. It was it was the coolest thing to see all of the to see all of the presentations.
Yeah, there were a lot of really interesting projects that people were working on this year.
But it was really exciting that you did ours. Yeah. Sure is.
Well worth it.
Yeah, it is. So ten minutes.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Well, thank you again all for having us here today. We really appreciate having the opportunity to come out and speak with you. And as many of you are aware, we created a community energy plan for the town of Yarmouth in order to move forward with this, these initiatives that you have in place and your hopes to become a more sustainable town. My name's Carolyn Stevens, and I'm here with my colleagues today. And I'm just going to give you a bit of an overview of what we did in our community energy plan. So I'm just going to give a little overview, go through our purpose and objectives, our methods, our baseline energy scan, our strategic energy solutions that we created for you, our final recommendations, and some acknowledgements to all the wonderful people who've helped us on this journey. So just to give you a little bit of information about us, this is a requirement from the Management Without Borders program, and all master's students in their second year in the Faculty of Management must take this course. And what happens is that towns such as yourself, or N G Os, or other groups, will propose a project to management without borders. Then individuals and students within the class choose the project that they're most interested in working towards. And the five of us chose to help you. So we come from a wide variety of backgrounds. There are two of us in the Resource and Environmental Management Masters, two in the Library Information Studies Masters, and one in the Executive Business Administration Masters. So the purpose and objective of this project was to focus on energy focused solutions that you guys would be able to implement. We know that you've already done some of the low hanging fruits, such as changing out some lights and some of the low flow toilets and those types of things, and you were looking for your next steps of where to go from there. So from that, we came up with a list of seventeen strategic energy solutions that fall under four categories: energy efficiency, renewable energy technology, transportation, and educational opportunities. So in order to do this, we employed a few methods, we performed a pestle analysis, and we actually came here in October and visited five key buildings in the town of Yarmouth that were kind of earmarked as needing some additional assistance and guidance in moving forward with energy strategies. And these were the Killams Wharf compost facility, wastewater plant, the fire station, and the Public Works building. And we went and did consultations with individuals at these buildings in order to glean a bit of information. So we performed a baseline energy scan, and then we developed these strategic energy solutions. So this baseline energy scan came from information that we were able to get from the town of Yarmouth in order to find out the total cost of electricity and fuel oil spent by each building. And some of these buildings are spending a lot of money on electricity and fuel oil, far more than what could reasonably be expected. And so the total fuel costs for many of these buildings are quite high, and we kind of came up with some ideas of how you might be able to reduce these. So the first category for our strategic energy solutions is renewable energy technology. And we kind of came up with three opportunities for you. The first are mini wind turbines. Now, many of you are familiar with the very tall wind turbines that you see around here, but mini turbines can be as little as four feet tall and can go on top of commercial buildings. And with the vast amount of wind energy available in Yarmouth, these could be an excellent opportunity to generate electricity. Next are the two types of solar technology. There's solar photovoltaic, which are those flat panels that you see that take the solar energy and convert it into electricity. Then there is solar thermal, which has the flat plates or the evacuated tubes. And these work in a similar way, except that they collect heat energy, and that heat energy can be used to heat up water tanks and to heat buildings. Our energy efficiency sector was the largest. We had a lot of strategic energy solutions for you here, things such as buffer timers for the wastewater treatment plant in order to reduce the demand on the system and the pull of electricity, replacing the metal halides in the compost facility with L E D options, putting in bylaws that would make a more sustainable community, such as anti-idling bylaws and green roof bylaws that can already be seen in many countries and in many cities around the world. There should be some draft control measures put in place at the Killams Wharf building due to the mass immense amount of heat loss occurring in that building every year. We recommended changing out the blast heaters and the fiberglass heaters in some of the key buildings. We recommend putting a carbon monoxide vacuum in the fire station, because this would not only help with reducing the amount of heat loss that occurs in the fire station, but also help with the health and safety of the employees currently in the building. We also wanted to mention and focus on the separate sewer system, which is a program that you guys are already putting in place here. For those of you who are not familiar, most of the sewer systems here are in what's called a combined sewer system. And in a combined sewer system, you have two types of water flows. The first is sanitary water, and sanitary water is what comes from your toilets, from your sinks, it's the water that you're using in your home that just goes down the drain pipes. Then there is storm water. And storm water is simply the water that falls from the sky. It's the water that's coming off of your lawns, going down the roads. And we are treating that storm water to the same degree that we are treating the sanitary water. And during certain storm events, when you have as little as fifteen millimeters of rain, it can double the amount of volume of water that needs to be treated at the wastewater treatment plant. So all of that additional water that does not need to be treated, you are spending all that energy, that electricity, that heating costs to heat and to treat all of that extra water. And so by changing to a to a separate sewer system, the sanitary water is the only water that gets treated, and the storm water is able to enter back into the environment without needing to go through those large treatment processes. The third suggestion and category is transportation. So we had a few options here, such as the bike lane and rack regulations that we've been hearing that you guys are really looking forward to implementing more of these, especially in the coming months. We recommend replacing the current backhoe at the compost facility with a specialized turner that would really reduce the fuel oil costs and the time and labor costs associated. We recommend a van pooling system, because we know that so many people are commuting into your town every single day in order to work, and there's a lot of single cars that are coming into the city. And in order to reduce some of that traffic, using something such as van pooling or car pooling would really assist with that. We already have heard that you are working on expanding your bus system, and we definitely support that. And a final option that you might not be as aware of is the bike share program. So for those of you not aware, bike shares is basically putting a station in a major transportation location. So if you have a major bus hub or a major building that many people arrive at when they enter into the town, and you put this station in place where people can rent out a bike for a few hours or for the day, and they can use that as a low carbon footprint way of getting around the town, which would really reduce the congestion that you're seeing on the roads, as well as reduce all of the carbon emissions. Finally, our last category is education, and we have three kind of options here. The first is developing a county partnership with other counties such as Bridgewater and others in order to facilitate knowledge sharing and information sharing, because there's a lot of really good and unique energy initiatives that are being put in place in some of these other counties. And it could really be to your benefit to work with these other counties in order to work on developing your own initiatives or working towards larger initiatives that could span across several counties. The second is a community champion, and this would be a person who would be put in place to support and advocate for your programs as you start to put them into place. And this would assist in actually creating more public support and public understanding of why these projects are important and why they are beneficial to the town of Yarmouth. And the third is a greenhouse. And when we were at the compost facility, we learned that there was infrastructure in place to take some of the excess heat from the compost facility to another location on site. At this additional location, a greenhouse could be built, and this could have many educational opportunities. It could help, the greenhouse could use compost from the compost facility in order to grow food and other types of plants. And this would help educate the people of the town of Yarmouth as to why composting is so important and the benefits of proper composting. I know here that you guys have a very high grade compost that you create here, which allows you.
We do.
Exactly, which allows you to grow food that can be used for human consumption. So this greenhouse could be used as an opportunity to really showcase and highlight that. Additionally, you could have students in schools come in and actually plant some of these species here and get them to actually interact with and learn more about composting and about growing their own food and locally purchased produce. So our final recommendations are kind of the overarching, we've given a lot of strategic energy solutions here, so we kind of wanted to leave you with a bit of advice of how to go forward. So it is our recommendation that the town council implement two or more of the energy efficiency solutions over the next five years. Some of these are very, very simple, such as changing out the metal halides into the L E D lights. And these have, many of them have very, very quick returns on investment as well. So implementing two over the next five years, we think would be a feasible strategy. We recommend that the town council adopt one of the renewable energy technology options to the Public Works or the Fire Station buildings in the next five years. These two buildings are spending a lot on their fuel oil costs as well as their electricity costs. And based on some of the information and the numbers that we were able to glean from our research, putting in something such as solar panels or solar thermal could bring back returns on investment within five or seven years. We would recommend that the town council introduce a pilot program to improve active transportation in Yarmouth, either by implementing a pilot project for the van pooling or bike share or one of the other options that appeals. And finally, we recommend that the town council commence a social program that involves public participation and knowledge sharing over the first two years. Because as you start to work towards some of these bigger projects of reducing energy consumption and moving towards a more sustainable town, you need the public to be aware of what's happening and to understand not only why it's important to the environment, but the potential benefits it can have to them, such as savings on their own electricity bills, how it can help with their breathing and the quality of air in the area. And by educating the populace, they'll be a lot more receptive to additional methods and proposals that you put forward. We'd just like to end by thanking all of you and the town of Yarmouth for reaching out to us at Management Without Borders and for giving us this opportunity opportunity to gain experience and to help Yarmouth in achieving your energy goals. We definitely are very excited to see where you guys will take this information in order to make the town more sustainable. And we would like to thank Natalie Smith for being available and helping us at every step of the project. She's been extremely helpful to us throughout this entire project. And we would like to, of course, thank the instructors of Management Without Borders for guiding us. Thank you very much.
Wow.
And if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Comment, first of all, thank you very much. I don't think I'd be out of line if I said if we asked someone to do this any other way, it would have cost us between fifty and a hundred thousand.
Oh, really?
For that information, you're in the right field.
Thank you very much.
You're in the right field. I I don't think you hit on anything that we either couldn't do or shouldn't do, given time and and funding and all those other pieces. I think I was just surprised to see how comprehensive the package was. This was amazing.
Thank you very much.
So the other question is, is that available to us?
Yes, Natalie currently has a copy of our full project. The first kind of beginning section is kind of an overview of many of the things that I covered in the presentation here, but we do have appendices that have actual detailed components for each of these projects with a bit more information and detail based on information we were able to find.
Okay, good. Thank you very much and for making the trip. It's a long trip to speak for twenty minutes, but we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Good stuff. Thank you. Awesome. Any questions, anyone? We're going to let you off the hook easy.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. Is this another group? Okay. Let me use, do that now. Oh, okay, we'll go through the reports, and we're good. Okay, we'll just start back where we back where we were. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the C A O report and the organizational review you were going to mention within that. Okay, so the CAO report and the organizational review you were gonna mention within that. Oh, here I am. Sorry, go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. The report is on your desk. I had just about completed in the time to have it available online electronically and got my attention distracted, and so I apologize for not having it to you earlier. The various motions of council are included and updates, brief notes on each. Councilor Landell asked specifically about the organizational review at the council meeting two weeks ago. So generally where we are with that right now is we've made application or we made an approach to the province to see if they'd be willing to go the journey with us, as they did in Digby and Claire. And they are interested, and so Chris McNeil has agreed to participate in our steering committee, which I assume is all of council. We have tried repeatedly, well, we had submitted an application to the province for funding assistance. They wrote back and said it has to come through our online portal. I've tried to the point of utter frustration to access the portal, so I passed it off to Linda. Linda isn't to quite the point that I was yet, but she's still been unable to access the portal. So the province is doing a great job of keeping the applications out. Nonetheless, we will apply. So the next step in the process would be to have a meeting of the steering committee to go through, I have a copy of the terms of reference from Digby when they did theirs, which is very similar to what they did in Claire. So I think as a basis or a template to use to look at what it is we would ask a consultant to do. I think it's important for you to think about anything specifically that you want in this organizational review. So we can set a meeting or we can have Linda poll you for a meeting to meet and do that.
Go ahead. Councilor Mokaize.
Yeah. I don't know, that sounds all confusing to me, but... My question, thanks for that information, but I'll have to give that some thought, really. I don't know if that's the type of stuff we were looking for or just, I don't know. 37 Clement Avenue. Where are we on that? I drove up there last week and today and that. I know it's got 25% done on there, but these people are anxious to know if there's gonna be anything done or anything happening, or has it gone to the right people? So that's my question to you, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry, no, it's okay. I'm just trying to find what it is.
Yeah, so that's the one that came up at the last council meeting, concerns about the property at 37 Clement Avenue. It's at the end of one, I think Cliff Street.
Yeah.
Now, I refer that to Dave Ernst, the Traffic Authority and Director of Operations. It is also, we agreed that it should be discussed at the Police Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
So those two things are the tracks we're on.
But in the meantime, in the meantime, I mean...
There's a stop sign there.
Yeah, the stop sign and whatever needs to be done. And yeah, it should be done because if it's occurring quite a bit, it should be really, really looked at. So these people are, they have some major concerns and rightly so. I mean, cars and that driving up on their lawn and in their backyard, it's not good. So we have to really look at that right away, if not sooner.
Can I ask you before you quit later?
Yeah.
How often is someone driving through a stop sign into their, on their lawn?
Well, that has to be looked at through the, how many calls they get through the RCMP or whatever. I don't know if they've been contacted to find that out. But he's, I've talked to him and he's, there's four or five different occasions through the evening and through the night. I mean, at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock one morning, there was a truck in the middle of his lawn that tore up the middle of his lawn. And could you just picture, it was in the summer, if you had kids out there camping or whatever, you know, in your backyard or doing any functions? It's just, it's just something, something's wrong at that particular 37 Clement Avenue Street. Something has to be addressed very soon.
Did you tell them to make sure they call the police on every day?
I didn't question him on that, but I'm sure that he did. You know, so I would imagine he did. He's quite concerned and he's called Sandy and a few other counselors. So I just thought I'd bring it up again where I'd just seen 25% done, and I don't know when the next meetings are or whatever. So if we can, you know, get this up and going, it'd be better than later.
Good. Sorry about that. Go ahead, CAO. No, just turned it off.
No, I'm done. I was just left on in case you were...
Go ahead.
Yeah, just with this grant to organizations, Jeff, what about, what's the story on the Coal Shed Festival? How do we work that one? I know it's not on this list right here.
Yeah, last year, council had made a decision to pay for the PA system, and I'll have to go back and review the motion.
Does that come out of this process here?
Well, it is a grant to an organization, not necessarily through that process. So last year, we had made a commitment to cover a certain amount of their sound system expense. I don't know if it was 100% last year. I'll check that, but that would not come out of, that would not be subject to your process here.
This process here, it has nothing to do with it?
Right, but it would come out of the same fund. So what we haven't done, and we will do later on the agenda, is you need to decide this fiscal year, how much you're gonna give out of grants next fiscal year. All right, so last year, I believe the amount was 72,500. You'll have to make a decision about how much money you're gonna make available for grants. And then things like the biosphere, things like the Coal Shed Festival, and everything else on the list, except for the taxes, that's a separate pool that, again, we'd ask you to approve before March 31st. Come out of that pool.
Okay. You.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead, deputy.
It's asked you of Linda. Linda, on our desk today was, this is a new one, is this... So there's two other groups on this that are not on the original one? I didn't hear, that's all.
Four territories is the last one. Was that just?
So this one is the current and has everything, okay. That's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Councilor Mooney?
CAO, what about the one for the taxes? What's the number that we're working with that? Because I know not everybody gets 100%. Is there a total there that we work with on that?
That's all right.
So I was corrected, whispered in my ear here, last year was 70,000 for the operating grants, and the number was 305,000 for the tax grants. Those are last year's numbers. If you wish to...
So we base it on 305?
That will be a motion I'll ask you to consider later today, set those amounts.
Okay. So in this extra package additions, there's Bantam AA. Looking for funds?
Is that one of the...
Well, that's new. That's brand new. And I just thought I'd better put it on now, just in case. But so that's, yeah, for the Bantam AA, I don't know how much they're asking. But anyway, that's, I mean, they keep... So when we get to that, then that's what we'll say. But we still, I don't know how you go backwards and track, I guess it's just through correspondence, to see who's asked for funds on top of the grants to organizations and to send that letter out and say, this is how you access funding. Because otherwise, they'll end up with nothing, you know, unless you do it separately, and that doesn't make it fair to the organizations that are sharing the rest of the money. So I don't know how you do that. Councilor Mokaize?
Thank you, your worship. I did see what they're looking, they're looking for $2,500.
Is that AA?
AA, yeah. They're looking for $2,500. Now, I've got mine all filled out here. It doesn't say I can't add more to it, because I have leeway here and I was just seafood, more than Stravaganza come out yesterday that I got in the email, and there's a couple other ones. Is this, the request for the Bantam AA, is that a request for grants to organizations?
Well, I just sent it in the mail.
It doesn't look like it is.
Well, we just, we just got it.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is that we keep getting these. So we have all these organizations asking for grant funding.
Yeah.
And so we share the little money we have, and then we have separate organizations that come in and ask separately, which is not...
And we do the same thing every year, and we have the same, we have the same discussion around the table. And we put out the information, and some people adhere to the information that we're putting out, and other people come in over, under the wire, over the wire. That's fine, but when you get over, then if you don't got the money, you don't got the money. But here, I've got my total here for what Councilor Mooney was asking, grants to the buildings and landowners and that, is 286,000? Is that what, that's, that was last year's, what we allotted last year? Those are the figures. No, 298,441.
Jerry, 305 last year?
Yeah.
305 on the tax grants.
Yeah. But on the total, it doesn't have to be 305, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so like last year...
Up two.
Yeah, up two, up two. Last year, I went on last year's figures, and I just copied it from this side to that side, usually, because it's the percentages that we all agreed upon some time ago. And there hasn't been any more discussion on whether we should go 100% for everybody because everybody fits in a different category. So these other, this Bantam AA, if they haven't got an application in for grants, then that's, we just told this gentleman here before he left, he has to put in the proper paperwork, otherwise you don't apply for it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying, and it's unfair, but, so what do we do? Do we send these guys an email, call them, or what do we do? I don't think it would hurt.
I mean, if we could agree, we could send an email, but it's gotta, I mean, we're doing this as of February 1st.
That's right.
We're panning in the sheets.
That's right.
No more for this year.
Yeah.
And then for next year, what I was saying is that we need to get, I'm sure we've done it already, we need to get word out, because you know what's gonna happen in two weeks?
We've done it for the last four years.
And we can't keep, we just can't keep doing it.
No, no. So anyway, I just wanted to just clarify for my own figures when I'm writing these down, and I have room enough to put these other three in, so, great, thank you.
Councilor Landell?
Thank you, your worship. I haven't started even started my spreadsheet, and I'm kinda glad I didn't. Because, and I agree with you, it's very frustrating to see these last-minute groups come crawling in the door, which, and other groups that went to it. I really think we should agree to a cutoff, and then once the cutoff is in place, it's done, and then we're finished with it completely. And I know poor Linda's been updating the spreadsheet a dozen times, and really, I'd like to see us if we could agree to close her off tomorrow and that's it, and anybody coming in after tomorrow, they're out of luck. I mean, it's simple as that. We've got a certain pot of money, it's a budget, we're trying to live within our means. I haven't started the spreadsheet yet, but a question to the CAO, I brought it up last year. Does that little puppy add as we go down? Is that little thing feature in there? So as I'm going and adding, putting my, because I typed mine in the spreadsheet. Oh, it's too bad. That'd be nice if you would.
Didn't do it last year?
I thought we did, had it, we had it embedded last year. Yeah, yeah.
It's not doing it this year?
It is there. I haven't started adding, just wanna make sure the feature was there before I started diddling, because I'd have a nervous breakdown if I had started getting the calculator out.
That's the best.
Okay, and just to make sure I'm absolutely right, we have 205 for the taxes, and we have 70 for the grant. 305, and whatever, and then maybe we could embed the formula that if we go over that amount, alarms will go off and our computer will blow up, or, yeah, computer will crash or stuff like that, but...
The number should come up minus.
Exactly, it should come up plus, but...
Okay, go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, those are the numbers you used last year, and again, we'll be asking for a motion later today to confirm those numbers for next year.
Unless there's a purpose in the process, let you have that.
Yes.
Yeah. You can, just let me say...
Oh, you go right ahead.
Are we talking, we're not just talking about this year, we're talking about, because I'm sitting here thinking, maybe we just need a really simple policy drafted that says, after the grants to organizations... We used to have that, but we went over, went over.
Over and over and over.
Because we had that 10,000 buffer, right?
Yeah, we had a buffer. This year, we have no buffer. Now, maybe we can...
I don't wanna make it comp, sorry, Ken, I want you to make your, I want you to make your motion, but go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, so for consistency purposes, I think you could consider adding to your grants policy that all applications must be in by January 31st, right? And then it's every year, that's the date, and you can remember it, and you can tell anybody who you're talking to that's looking to apply for a grant, get it in before January 31st.
That's exactly what I was heading for. I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that the town of Yarmouth put into policy that grant applications must be received at Town Hall on the last business day of the month of January.
Moved and seconded. It does. Remembering that somebody is gonna walk in here next month or in six months, it's gonna be a really great idea. Okay? But I think the policy would cover us. The policy will cover us, as opposed to playing politics. Okay. Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Two? I think we're covered. All right.
The only reason I voted against it is municipal politics doesn't run in a perfect world or inside a box, right, or inside a vacuum. There's gonna be extenuating circumstances, and it's gonna happen, it's already happened before this day is over, right, with the one with the Bantam, and it's gonna happen again if somebody gets awarded a provincial or Atlantic or maritime championship here in Yarmouth, they're gonna be coming and requesting funds, so... But in a perfect world, the motion's good, right? But we're not living in a perfect world.
So we also have the room levy, too, so...
That's right.
It's, all right. Okay, we're good. So far. Okay. Quarter after two, we're on item number. Anything else for the CAO? Good? Fire Department report, and I see the chief is here. Anything you wanna report, or chief, did you have to, anything you want?
Just the numbers are, I was just gonna count the numbers here if I had a look at it, if there's any questions.
Go ahead, Councilor Mooney first.
Chief, you heard the report from the energy students here earlier, what do you think about that? Is there anything there that you can implement between yourself and Dave?
I'd have to take a look at it and sit down with Dave to find out what, you know, what type of funding's out there and everything. Everything they said is very, very, very good, especially when it comes to the health, the health side, not just the energy saving side.
Okay, so you're gonna have a look with Dave with that?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Dave and I can get together here.
Good?
Good, thank you. You're good? All right, anything else for the chief? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We love it. Planning Department report to a minimum housing standards bylaw housing network event.
So my, the planning department's report was distributed before the meeting, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And the second item there about minimum housing was a presentation from Laura Lee, just discussing what she's been doing around minimum housing. So if you have any questions, if not, I'll let her...
Any questions for Caroline before Laura Lee comes?
Keep up the work.
Yeah, good stuff.
Thank you.
And you know the world off here, there's gonna be a couple motions here in a little bit that you might need your guidance on. Thank you.
Just give him a whirl in the tour.
Welcome. Thank you. Most of you know, I'm Laura Lee Atkinson, building official. Just give him a whirl in the floor.
Welcome. Thank you. Most of you know, I'm Laura Lee Atkinson, building official. And one of my jobs as building official is enforcing the minimum housing standards. This presentation was originally presented at the housing network event at Rod's Grand Hotel where there was a group of different organizations pulled together. Choice Housing Network, I think some of you are familiar with that group. But anyway, that's what this was pulled together for, so bear with me. As you know, the Municipal Government Act provides municipalities with the authority to establish a minimum housing standard bylaw, which the town of Yarmouth has done in the past and, most recently, last year, updated. It's my job as building official to enforce that. The minimum housing standard bylaws, you know, is just a minimum standard of living for folks in rental units. And the bylaw basically outlines some of the standards that the town requires these residential units to adhere to. Solid walls, floors, roof to protect from the elements, secure working windows and doors, safe exits, natural, night, natural light and ventilation, electricity for lighting and appliances, smoke alarms, plumbing, a working kitchen, and heat in the cold weather. If there's a conflict with this bylaw and any other regulation or other bylaw that's more restrictive, that would prevail.
So, I have a question already.
Yep.
This heat in cold weather, so how, how do you mean that?
The bylaw states that the central heating system must be able to maintain a temperature of 20 degrees Celsius.
All right. So, it has to provide a heating, working heating system?
A central heating system that's able to heat. Yeah. We do inspections when we receive complaints. Those come in generally from tenants. They can come in from the landlord, council, and referrals by other departments that may have gone into a situation that they feel a housing inspection should be done.
Counselor Dennis has a question?
I just have a question on smoke alarms. Under the minimum housing standard bylaws, are they wired-in ones or are they battery-operated?
No, it just says smoke alarms. It doesn't define how they have to be installed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, because that can be a problem with rentals and stuff because some people take the batteries out or they just can't afford to buy batteries?
Yeah, and the National Building Code changed in 2005 to address that. It wasn't until that year that it required wired-in with battery backup.
Oh, good, thank you.
So, the inspection process, I have a checklist that I take with me so I don't forget to look at something. I take photos, I take notes, and I take note of any life safety issues that should be maybe dealt with through the fire inspector or through dangerous and unsightly. I do up a report, I notify the tenant of what I've got in the report. I make sure that the deficiencies that I noted were what they complained about. And if there's something they complained about that I can't deal with through minimum housing, I let them know that I can't do anything about that and why. Then I contact the building owner, I notify them of the deficiencies and of the next steps. And the next step is in order to remedy. They are given generally 90 days to comply. It's not always easy to get contractors in to deal with some of the situations that have to be dealt with. And you have to remember, if I've seen a life safety issue, I've, I've passed that along to, to another authority with, that would probably put a, a shorter timeline for them. So, after the 90 days are up, or once I get a call that the work is done, I do a reinspection.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I was going through my emails, as I usually do at different, different times of the day, and I come across one that was intended for us, intended for Caroline. I was telling Caroline the other day, one of your reports. And it was, uh, it was very, there was a lot of good information there. You, you, you went through it, you'd done your homework, you, you, you really went through this place. And I, I like the way that you wrote it up. The pictures are self-explanatory. And I just, I wanted to say it before other people get run out. You, you're doing a great job, especially in those reports and letting council and, and your, your superiors know. So, you're doing a great job at that, thank you.
Thank you. So, the 90-day period's up, I do my reinspection. One of two things happens, they've either complied. If they complied, it's easy, I write a letter back to the person that I wrote the original order to stating that they've complied with the order and the file is closed. If there's non-compliance, if they're requesting an extension and it's reasonable, I can grant the extension and then it goes back up around and I start my reinspection process. If I've got a sense that there's no, they're not going to comply, they're being difficult to deal with, or they're just, you know, avoiding me, a summary offense ticket can be issued. And discontinuation of the property as a residential unit can also be posted if it's felt or deemed necessary. So, consequences of non-compliance, a fine will be issued, most normally. An order to discontinue the residential use in the property can be issued. If that happens, the owner, the owner will lose property income and sometimes the tenant must relocate. Some of the key issues that I've noticed in doing this job, from the tenants, many of them are low income. They don't believe they can afford anything else, which is why they're in the situation or the rental that they're in. Some of them are afraid to report the situations to me because they feel that will cause a conflict between them and their landlords. There's also fear of increased rent. So, if, you know, there's a lot of work that has to be done in building, they're afraid the rent will go up as a result of that and they won't be able to rent, or be able to afford that apartment anymore.
Pastor Dennis?
I just have a question on the non-compliance. If a tenant has to relocate, is there some, someone or something in place to help them find a new location for what they can afford?
Yeah, we don't ever leave anyone in the dark or, we don't strand anyone. We're, we work really hard to make sure that they are in contact with the right department to help them. That's not always easy, but we do have procedures in place that, yeah, we wouldn't want to just throw someone out on the street, not give them direction on who to contact, for sure.
Perfect, thank you.
So, the landlords come across destructive tenants, that's an issue for them. The cost to renovate and repair their apartment does, in many cases, require them to increase the rent to cover some of the costs. Some of them just aren't able to afford to do the repairs. Perhaps they bought a building that wasn't in the best of shape to begin with, thinking that, you know, some revenue for them. In that case, they may vacate the building and the town of Yarmouth has another vacant building.
So, where do they go? They must, they don't go to you, they go to the tenancies board? Because then they have, they, they also have the tenants that don't pay. And then they promise to pay and they don't pay again, so, so I have the landlords calling me that may, out of 12 months, get three maximum months' rent out of tenants. And they can't do anything about it. So, they, so it's a cycle. So, they can't fix the apartments. And, um...
Yeah, it is.
So, it's a real issue for the landlords.
It's, it's a, a big issue for, for everyone, I think. So, yeah, in, in cases like that, whether it's the tenant or the landlord, there's often, I would say at least, and I might be lowballing, at 50% of the time, this is a tenant landlord dispute that initiates the call, the complaint to me. So, the tenancy board's generally involved. And they don't usually contact me. But if they need, if they need any supporting documentation from our office, there's orders that are issued that can be used. So, back to Counselor Dennis. When we identify that there is someone vulnerable or needs help, whether it's due to the discontinuation of the property as a residential use, or if they're evicted by the landlord in order to carry out the work, or they just find themselves in a bad situation with the landlord, we try our very best. Community services is supposed to be out there to help some of these folks. There are other organizations sometime that step in as well. And I think there's some work being done. Our planner can probably fill you in better on that than myself, but it work in the background with these organizations. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I did make note before I came down with my presentation, in case you're interested. Since I've been working here, which has been just over a year full-time, we have 20 files for minimum housing standards. And right now, there's five active files, so they, there would be an order for them to remedy. And it's within the 90-day period for them to, to remedy the situation. And of those 20 files, four, four of those were referred to another agency, likely the fire inspector. And seven of those are completed, there was three invalid. And of all those orders, right now, there's only one order not to occupy as a residential use, but that was a vacant property to begin with.
Good stuff. This is great. This is good work. We really need it. Both sides need it, actually. Any more questions for Laura Lee? Go ahead.
Just a, a couple of quick questions, or just a quick question. In different areas of town, there's houses that have been damaged by fire and stuff. I can think of two or three in the South End area town that's been boarded up a number of years. What's our policy on, on that? I mean, the, the inner, the inner of it, the inside of it is burnt, and nothing's been done, it's been boarded up, two or three houses. Do we have a pol, do you know if we have a policy on that that allows the town or whatever, or for you to issue a notice to either fix or do whatever, to fix these places up there? You know, I, I know we have a policy, I think we do Jeff on... Per what? Boarded up buildings, yeah, so, but boarded up buildings, but the inside of, of the building itself. So, anyway, if you know the answer of not, we could hopefully find out the answer and I'll leave it at that and let you answer it.
Did you want to take that one?
Sure. Yeah, so, our boarded-up building bylaw was misunderstood by our prior, previous building inspector and, and our bylaw enforcement officer. They believed that the building inspector was to, was to, or sorry, the bylaw officer was to issue these permits. In fact, the way the bylaw is written, that's council's role. So, council decides if a permit will be issued. They are one-year, year permits and they can apply for renewal. Our bylaw officer was made aware of that just this year because in a particular instance, we looked into it more closely and realized that the wording was such that the authority rested at this table.
So, the, the buildings, particularly in the South End area or wherever in town that's been boarded up for a number of years, have they ever applied for an extension or a year, years grace? Has that ever become before council, or they just boarded it up and that was it? What's, what's the procedure now to, to let, let whoever know, the owners, that there is a process that they have to follow through with, right?
That's right. So, so as we became more aware of, of what in fact the process should have been, I asked the, I advised the bylaw officer and asked him to advise those people who, who would be now without a permit to either request a permit, apply for a permit, or to unboard the buildings.
And do what?
Well, take the, it's about boarding up the windows, so...
So, if, if there's no windows in the building because of fire or whatever?
They'd have to fix the windows.
Okay.
So, you remember, we had one on Star's...
On Star's Road, yeah.
On Star's Road, right? And the order was to remove the boards.
That's right.
They fixed the windows and removed the boards.
That's right.
So, but we can't make them, under that bylaw, make them fix up the interior.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. That's, that was my main question, that's all. Great, thank you.
Good? Thanks, Laura Lee. Operational Services. Dave? Any questions for our engineer? Go ahead, Phil.
Hi, Dave, and I'm like Counselor Langel. I've been out walking a little bit lately. And the sidewalk's been really good, it's been cleared well. But there's only one problem, I've seen it the last couple of years, and I noticed it again today. Went down in front of Burridge Campus, almost directly in front of the main door, there's probably a 30-foot section, looks like there's water that comes up out of the lawn. It was like, could be like the Make Leaf Gardens, Air Canada Center, the hockey rink. And you couldn't set foot on that 30-foot stretch of, of sidewalk because you'd fall ass over kettle. I wonder, have you ever talked to the people at Burridge Campus about that situation? Because it looks like it comes out of the lawn and it's...
Yeah, it does.
Is there any way we can remedy that, or is that a problem?
I don't know what really we can do with it other, other than try to keep the sidewalk salted, but...
Yeah.
That's what we've been attempting to do in the last years, few years, but ever since we built the trail. But I don't know, we can have a look at it again, see if there's anything we can do with it at all, but it's a difficult situation and, I don't know, there's no easy, easy answer to it.
I know because when there's, when it was snow on both sides of the, when there's a lot of snow down, there's snow on, on, on the, on the school side and snow on the street side, they actually had to walk through a couple of feet of snow or walk into the road in a dangerous situation to get away from that spot. And I just wondered, maybe we need a motion for town staff to contact with Burridge Maintenance to see if they can rectify the problem of water and ice in front of their location.
We can do that, I don't know what the reaction will be, but anyway.
Okay, can I have a second there?
It comes out of the lawn.
Good for now? Good for now? Go ahead.
Dave, just, just sitting here, just thinking, I'm just talking to my Counselor Langel. The sidewalk, I'm not an engineer, but I just think, thinking out loud here. Where it floods, would it be possible, or do you think this would work, to maybe make a, a, a channel on the sidewalk, down a bit where the grate is for, from the lawn, from their lawn, wherever it's coming over? Put a grate on it on the sidewalk where, cut this, cut the cement or the pavement, whatever it is. And channel it out to the, to the streets, or would we go down into the drain in, in a couple of spots? You know grates, as you walk over grates in, in different, different places, maybe a foot, two feet, but it would have a, a channel in there?
We can have a look at it. I don't recall if there's a storm sore right in front of that area or not.
But at least it would go in the water, right? I mean, the, the, the drain or on the road, wherever.
There's sections there that there's no storm in front of it, so...
Yeah. Anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there and just to see, just a thought, that's all.
Good. Counselor Langel?
But every two years, I bring this up and nothing really happens, so I'll bring it up again. When you walk down Brunswick Street going in a northerly direction and you come to Elm, there are two sidewalks, one on each side, leading up to Elm. And this has been my pet peeve, and for some reason, I've yet to get an explanation for it, but we keep doing it. So, you arrive in Elm. And now, if you're on the harbor side of Elm, you're greeted with a, with a crosswalk. The crosswalk leads you to a lawn. Yet, on the other side of the street is where the sidewalk continues to go down into Vaughn Avenue. There is no crosswalk to go across where these two streets intersect. And I've brought this up repeatedly over the years.
Chestnut Street?
Chestnut Street, your street, your worship, yeah, Chestnut, I'm sorry, Chestnut Street. So, you, you walk down the sidewalk and there's a crosswalk that takes you to a lawn. But on the other side of the street, you have the sidewalk continuing, there's no crosswalk. I'm wondering logically, could we maybe... I'm wondering, logically, could we maybe not paint that crosswalk this year, and put a crosswalk on the other side? I keep bringing this up.
We do that.
Yeah, that's not a problem, it's just the guys, when they're out painting, they just paint what's there, so unless you catch them...
And you certainly can't do anything new on the mayor's street, that'll end up on Facebook.
Yeah.
It's a safety. How did he get a, how did he get a sidewalk, and I can't get a crosswalk? So, um, so Dave, what do you need for that to happen? Do you just need, do you need a motion, or just make note of it?
No, we'd just make note of it.
Okay. Good. Yeah. It's, it's, it is true, it's funny, because I don't pay attention to any of it. There wasn't a motion. Oh yeah, there's a question on Phil's motion, which was?
Direct staff to contact Burridge Maintenance to see if they can rectify the problem in front of their apartment.
Just checking to see if you remembered. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Good. Anything else for the engineer?
Thanks Dave.
Thanks Dave. Okay, finance. Let me ask it for Councilor McCausick, do we have any money?
Very little, very little money.
That's right, I'll stick to it.
So, is there any questions for Jerry, because we are going to do a budget presentation later, too, you'll be here for that?
Yep.
Okay, good. Oh, sorry, I didn't even...
Are we going to, are we going to start setting some dates for the budget process? Because I know I'm going to be away with Phil and Madeline there for a week, and next week's kind of nuts, too, so just wondering if, when we're going to start this whole process, because setting schedules aside.
Yeah, so Jerry has some preliminary work that he needs to do before, with the directors, before we'll know exactly when we need, when we'll engage with, with our process with council, but he and I had intended, last couple of days, to, to find some time to sit together and sort of work through a calendar, which we did not, so let's say at the council meeting, we'll have a calendar for you. Okay? And in the meantime, if you're going to be away, if you know dates now, if you can send them into Linda, we'll try and work around as many as we can.
Yeah, or the, or doodle call for, I know you don't like those doodles. Yeah. Go ahead, Councilor McCausick.
Well, as I said on, on the last meeting, I'm just hoping you consider not on weekends, like Saturday or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, good.
No fear that happens.
No, because I'm, I'm only saying this, Monday to Thursday, I work Friday and Saturday and Sunday, so they're, they're not good days for me, I like to be part of the process, so if it can be a weekday, it would be much better for myself, and I'm only speaking for myself.
Recreation?
Good report, by the way.
I circulated a report, and I know we're running short of time, I just did want to mention on one thing, with volunteer awards coming up in April, I know council discussed the issue around making sure people that are, are in charge of hosting major events in the area are contacted, and we're doing our best to do a swath of the community in trying to get as many different nominations in for volunteer awards, including all the major events that happen throughout the year, so hopefully those people that may have been thought about when council addressed the volunteer celebration, hopefully we'll get nominations in from those groups, like seafood extravaganza, car show, those type of groups that may not be an official group, but a one-off type of event, type of group, so...
We were going to do something, what were we going to do with Volunteer Week? Remember that? Remember?
The intention was, there was a motion we brought forth, your worship, that was concerned about the number of volunteers that volunteer a lot, for example, the Sea Fest, Coal Shed, like this, usually what we tend to have done in the past, we recognize the chairs of the event, or the individual, but in certain events, it's more than the chair, there's a huge team there, and the thought was, was to have a, a thank you, especially some of our, what I would call banner events that we have each year, that attract a lot of visitors to our area, so the thought was to expand that, and that was moved over to Volunteer Week, we thought we'd do that as part of the volunteer work. Yeah, we're going to do a reception here of some kind, your worship, that was going to be done.
Okay. So I have a question.
Sure.
The outdoor rink, and I've asked, I've, I've asked the question of the Mariner Center, and number one, we need a level surface, number two, aluminum is expensive, so it would have to go somewhere that's, seriously, yeah, no, it's not so bad as it used to be, there's no one there, I understand, at the Mariner Center, that could man that, and the best use may not be in the winter. I just, I just ran it by the, the other wardens very quickly, and, and is there any way we can get that up? I'm not saying I'm leaving it on your lap, but we've got, we've got a play on rink that, that the community could be using. What do you, what are your thoughts?
Well, a couple of thoughts. The Mariner Center parking lot is not suitable for that court, because of the way the drainage is in the parking lot, but we hosted a ball hockey tournament for Jody Shelley Day a couple summers ago, and we had identified the Canadian Tire parking lot as a spot to put that arena, but at that time, there were issues with taking up parking, parking spaces, but I think some things are at, at play to relax some of those, so that's a possibility. I did get the email forwarded from you Pam, and so I don't know if that's something that the three municipal units are interested in, looking at possibly a site where we can pour a pad specifically for that arena. I've offered my services of our department to treat that facility like a ball field or soccer field, that if groups want to use it, they call us, they book it for an hour and a half slot, and we look after it, and maintain it, and try to get as many different groups in there using it. But the issue is finding a flat, level surface...
Okay.
...that's highly visible, and in a, a spot where it'll stay erected and it...
And safe.
Yeah.
Second parking lot behind the R C P station, Frank, or the first parking lot?
Too small. And we can't, we can't take up parking spaces there, right?
Yeah. Okay, so, so we'd be looking for one of two things, probably a motion to see if the other councils, because it was given to the Mariner Center, so it's, it belongs to three of us, to see if they're interested in sharing a pad.
It was given.
Hmm?
It was given. No.
Hmm? We paid?
Yeah.
How much we pay?
Lot, seven, eight thousand.
For, oh, yeah, okay, all right.
So I, I have talked to Gil, Gil just said exactly what you just said, wintertime really isn't the time to be talking about this, but I think it is, to plan for the spring, and if we are going to look at, you know, pouring a pad, then picking a spot, you know, I think on Mariner Center lot somewhere makes sense to me.
I was looking for ice.
Uh, ice?
I was looking for ice.
Out...
I was looking for an outdoor ice rink.
Is that a very long name?
What's that?
Yeah, we've, our department's attempted 20, 20 outdoor rinks, and we can have ice for three or four days, and then you've got a pond.
Okay, so, so that solves the problem from my end, because it's been bothering me that that has been sitting there, that beautiful piece of equipment, and we can't use it in the winter, and how cool would it be? You know, you go to the Atlantica, and you're looking out at the, at the Oval, and I, I know that's a different ball game.
Totally, totally different, yeah.
Man, it's just such a, okay, so, so we'll just, we can just leave it for now, and you can...
Well, I hope, I hope that when you do meet with the, the other municipal partners, that that may be something that they're interested in. I briefly discussed it with the Recreation Department in Argyle, and they were very interested in doing something, and obviously have it in a central location where all residents can use it.
Okay, so, so is a fair motion to direct staff to figure costing for, for the level, what do you call it?
Pad.
For the level pad? And/or seek alternatives that are already in existence? You're going to tell me if that is the proper thing.
Well, I, I guess that's, that's another issue, is that really it's not our department that owns that piece of equipment, so...
Yeah.
Mariner, I assume Mariner Center, it may be an issue to be brought up by the, to the Mariner Center Management Board? I, I'm not sure, did the Mariner Center buy the, that's the other thing, I guess, did the Mariner Center Management Board buy it, or was it bought by the three councils?
I know Gil looked at having a pad built, and it was just cost prohibitive for the Mariner Center itself. I forget the number, but it's, it was expensive, because you know, to put down proper base and pave it, it was expensive to do.
I think he tried to source some of co-funding for it, and failed on that end, too, but...
Okay. Councilor Langer?
Well, my only observation is, is you're going to have an outdoor rink, which I think is a great idea, but I'm just looking at our weather situation, sitting, sitting, sitting on soil, and I mean, our ground really isn't frozen here in Yarmouth, in order for that thing to work, you're going to need some heavy-duty frozen soil, which we're not, I'm watching them clear that area up at the end of Forest and Haley Road, I don't know, you think he's down what, about, I think he went down about six inches before, he was a little bit of frost down there, and I'm just wondering, the science, and I know nothing about science, but I'm just wondering the science, how do these things work with the, with its manufacture of nature's ice? I mean, it's, obviously it's got to get pretty cold, the ground's got to keep the heat, get to keep the cold in it, in order to keep the ice cold, I would assume, up top, so hate to see us spend all kinds of money on something that we may not be using, which is unfortunate, I mean, if you have to turn into an outdoor volleyball court in the summer or something.
Yeah, so we just said that, that, we were just saying that...
Ball hockey.
The winter one is out.
And that's the other thing, I guess if we did put a bladder inside that, the board structure, when the ice freezes and thaws, then you could have damage to the, to the boards, I would think.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm thinking totally ball hockey, not for outdoor ice application.
Okay, that's easier. What's next? Go ahead.
Well, again, I think, I think regardless of ownership of it, it's sitting in storage, so I think it'd be appropriate to ask, ask the Recreation Committee to, to, to direct or request Frank to look into it, their staff to look into it. It's sitting in storage, and you know, Mariner Center, it's obviously not a priority for them to get it out and, and in use, so if it's more important for us to do it than it is for them, then we should, we should do it. And if Frank is offering to manage it, I think whatever solutions come up, you know, location, so on, it has to be, Frank has to consider whether or not that location and that situation is manageable for his department, so I would, I'd suggest that they should, they should take a look at it.
And I, I have no problem with that, I just think it should be somewhat of a partnership with, with Mariner Center, they have lots of equipment, staff knowledge, resources, and I've, like I said, I have had, I think at the November council meeting, your worship, you asked me to, to kind of probe into that a little bit, and I did with, with Gil at the Mariner Center, so I'm sure we can put our heads together, put some numbers together, and to me, what, what I'm hoping is that something may work out with, with Canadian Tire, because of our strong relationship that we have with them, with Jump Start, which is a local charity, helping support children in sports. So I, I think it's doable, it's just, it's just something that, I guess, you can't just put anywhere without it...
No, 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 but, but we just need somebody to look at, just a couple options.
Yep.
All right. Okay, we good? Want to be at Danny first? So if you don't turn your light out.
Yeah, so are we looking for a motion here to recommend that the Recreation Committee look at, look at what we just discussed here around the table, they can have a look at it? Frank, you know what we're talking about here, the equipment that is just in limbo out to the Mariner Center, it's part of the recreation, look at it and see if we can negotiate with our, our partners, and see if we can get whatever needs to be done for a pad or whatever, wherever. Can we look at that, and bring that up, that we, I make a motion that we bring this up to the Recreation Meeting, next Recreation Meeting, send a letter off, to be put on the agenda for discussion, to the...
That works. Keep in mind that, that we are partners with, you know, with the Mariner Center.
With the, with the other two partners, yeah.
County and in Argyle.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my motion, if that makes any sense.
Well, it does, it's just to...
Yeah, okay.
To them.
Okay, so...
Can I have a second, or?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
No.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Good, anything else for Frank? He's probably had enough. Councilor Langer?
Yeah, just a question, your worship, I'm curious, I noticed that Flag Day has moved to the county, we're not doing it at the Senate half, as we've always done?
Didn't you do that last year at, at Maple Grove?
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to do it at Maple Grove once again, the indoor, indoor venue was great, Flag Day, as, as those of you that know, that have done the outside activity, it's cold, windy, a lot of, anyway, very low attendance, so by inviting the entire student body, we get the kids involved, and invite all the, the dignitaries and public to, to join us there, so Flag Day falls this year on the New Provincial Heritage Holiday.
Yeah.
So we're going to be having it on the Friday before Flag Day, so Friday, February 12th, and we'll send out invites, and we just confirmed the Memorial Club, and so we're putting plans together for that.
Excellent. Good. Thank you. Okay, Economic Development Report, Ms. Natalie. Any questions for our Economic Development Officer? Go ahead, Councilor.
Just one, I'm reading your report Natalie, good job as always, I'm reading the hub.
Yes.
So there's a website there, so...
It's not fully constructed.
Pardon?
It's not fully constructed, as yet.
Yeah, there's just a, there's just a, a direction, it takes you to an email address, and that mentions two companies, Zona Games, which I've located, Colovo, Col, Colovo? There's no web presence, there's no web presence, what, what do they do? I'm just curious.
They are a web design company, and Mark, that's a new company that Mark Davis has started.
Are they going to do a website for themselves?
No, it's, it's more back-end development.
So how do they promote themselves?
He has ways, I guess.
Okay, good.
He's got a Facebook page.
I was just curious, because there's no web presence.
His clientele, yeah, I think his clientele is probably beyond our borders.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Natalie? Good?
So I just have the request for decision that I've attached to my report, which is a request for council, or a recommendation for council, to review the, a joint municipal letter to UNSM, so that we could have a municipal energy learning group, and sort of piggybacking on the presentation that was done early by our M W B team, and so there's some pretty significant projects that are happening around the South Shore, and Bridgewater has certainly been a, a very important lead for the province, and I think they've been awarded with, with Quest, an organization that looks at sustainable planning, to do a community energy plan, so we would certainly learn quite a lot through, through the work that they're doing, as well as the other, the other groups.
So you're just looking for a motion to approve this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Make a motion to the recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Make a motion to the recommendation, Natalie?
Uh, yes. So the recommendation is staff recommends the town council for the town of...
Go ahead. What, sorry?
I'm going to make a, I'll make a motion that the, that the Town of Yarmouth approved the town's participation as a signatory to the attached joint letter to the UNSM Board of Directors requesting... to the attached joint letter to the UNSM Board of Directors requesting that the UNSM lead the proposed municipal energy learning group.
Okay. That was moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Good. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Business. PAC recommendation from December council referred to community in the whole. Church uses as a non-residential permitted use. Okay. Planning Advisory Committee to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and imbue advisable amend the land use bylaw to permit churches as a non-residential permitted use in all residential zones in order to permit residential properties within the Towne Yarmouth to use their homes for worship purposes and erect a sign, promote the use. Did you want to speak to it at all? If she wants to.
I can, I can explain where this came from. I had an application from Reverend Treese, who currently lives at 57 Argyle Street. And he's interested in doing a youth group at his home, and he wants to put up signage for it. So usually we don't regulate, youth groups are looked at as a business, but because he wants to put up signage, that's where he kind of conflicts with our land use bylaw. So what we're proposing, what I've, I've proposed, is that we allow church uses as a permitted, non-residential use in residential zones. And it would just be as a, as a home-based business. So they would have to comply with our percentage of floor area, number of employees, and all those regulations we have around a home-based business.
So can a home-based business in the middle of a residential neighborhood put up a sign?
Yes. Basically, all this is so he can put up a sign.
Go ahead, Councilor McIsaac.
Uh, Councilor Mooney had it on first.
No, I had it on for a long time. I was going to ask a question.
We asked a number of questions, I think, at our last council meeting. I think it was the, our monthly meeting about, about having both in there. I never had time to go over this in great detail. It is a, it is a permitted use to have a church and a home in the same place?
It's not.
It's not?
Right now.
Right now. So you, we want to, you're asked, you're suggesting that we should change this and have the two into one as a permitted use?
As a home-based business, and we have a whole bunch of regulations around home-based business.
Home-based business?
More like the church-related, all the things, all the uses that come with a church, that they can occur as a home-based business at this man's, at anybody's home. But all the regulations we have around home-based businesses would still apply. So that's only 25% of the floor area. He could only have two additional staff, two himself. And actually, because a church is considered an assembly use within the building code, he's, they're even more restrictive. If it's over 10% of the home floor area associated to the use, then they have to put in fire separation and all kinds of stuff that becomes too costly to really want to have that use in your home. So he's going to keep it under 10% of his floor, just in his parlor, so many youth meeting on a weekly basis.
Ah, okay. I got a different, different vision in my head, different thought of why this whole process is even going like this and the reasons why I think they're going like this. I think it might, it could open up a Pandora's Box of different people applying for the same things, tax exemption, right? Is all of the house going to be tax exempt or partial of it tax exempt? And is there any other places in Nova Scotia or in Yarmouth that have this already? Apparently doesn't have it in Yarmouth because we're trying to make the recommendations. Do you know of any other places that these are allowed?
I think generally that this kind of thing's allowed everywhere. It's the problem when you put up the sign. I mean, I grew up going to youth groups at different people's houses and Bible studies, right? It's something that happens. It's that he wants to put up a sign to advocate that he has this, this opportunity.
And that puts him in a different category.
Yeah. So I'm kind of being creative here, like, to allow it to happen. But he, only 10% of the floor area could be devoted to this use unless he wants to go do extensive renovations on his home to meet the building code.
I'm not against it. I'm just, I'm just thinking here, different reasons why it's, you know, I mean, why he's going this route.
I think from the tax perspective side, the, the, the main use on this property is residential. And I think that's how it would be assessed. I'm not the one who assesses properties. But it's only, it's a very small portion of the property and a very small amount at the time.
Yeah, I understand that now. Okay, great. Thank you.
And that's a question I had to the Cao, like Planner said. I was, I was wondering about the tax component of it, because maybe if you said I'm using 10% of my house as a, as a church use, so I'm paying $2,500 a year in taxes, I can take $250 off because I'm using 10% of my house as a, as a church. Is, is that, how would that work, or is that a good question?
That's a good question that I was texting to get the answer to. Not only that, you know, 10% of your house, but how much of your property is, would you claim is dedicated to the parking for your parishioners? I've asked through, through text message here, is the, is the, are the residents of clergy exempt in the same way that the, the church itself is? So, you know, I'm thinking is, is that, well, if I have a church, obviously I'm the pastor, and this is where I live. And if that, you know, so there's some, there's some tax implications that I think we need to be aware of, informed on, before we go too far down this road, just to make sure, as the counselor said, Pandora's Box doesn't spring open. Yeah.
I, yeah, I agree. I agree. And only be the same thing. I've had Bible studies at my house for 20 years. And I, yeah, exactly. So I'm going to start writing it off. But, but, you know, you just invite people, and sometimes five come, sometimes 15 or 20 come. And, and it happens every night. I'd say probably to at least 50 houses in this town. Yeah. No signs, no exemptions, but, but the sign just puts it in it. Then all of a sudden, I can put up a sign that says, "Coming in and having a Bible study," and I'm tax exempt. So I completely agree with, let's figure this piece out first. If your text doesn't get back. Go ahead, Deputy, and then Dan.
Just a question. Does it stop the process to go to a public hearing? Can we, as a council, not approve going to a public hearing at this point?
Well, the item was referred here from council, and you can't go to a public hearing from here, I believe, Greg? That's correct. It would have to be a decision at the council meeting in February to proceed to a public hearing. So this, this is just for discussion and for further thought on the matter?
I guess I was, been part of the discussion all along, and I think Caroline is trying to show us a way to proceed. But from a personal point of view, not as Chair of the committee or a counselor, I don't think we need to put a sign on, because as, as Her Worship has mentioned, and I'm aware of these kinds of groups or meetings taking place throughout the town on a regular basis for the past 100 years or more. So I, I think a council might get refused, from my point of view.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, am I on there?
Oh, you are on, sorry.
Well, it's not, I don't want to stop the process, because there is a process, and that's what this is all about. So it's recommended, it's brought to the committee in the whole, and committee in the whole will recommend it to council or the PSAC, right? Is that, am I correct, Jeff, by saying that? That goes to PAC? It's been to PAC?
It's been to PAC, it's been to council.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm, okay, like a ping pong ball. So now it's, it wants to see if it can go to recommend to council, right? And so you need a motion to go to council for that, to be brought up at council to go to that? This hasn't been to council yet, has it?
Yes, and then we recommend it to hear.
Oh, back to the committee in the whole?
Right.
Okay, so now...